If I could ask everybody to rise, and I would like to ask Lieutenant Colonel Charles Stone to lead us in the pledge, please. Next item, please.
Next item is the video statement, or roll call, I'm sorry. Councilmember Lopez Taft.
Here.
Councilmember Middleton is participating remotely, and as soon as we get her joined, she'll be joining us. Councilmember Schaefer?
Here.
Vice Mayor Karpinski Costa?
Present.
And Mayor Daniels.
Here. Next item, please.
Next item is the video statement. This meeting of the Citrus Heights City Council is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast and AT&amp;T U-verse cable systems. This meeting is closed captioned and livestreamed at citrusheights.net. Tonight's meeting replays on Monday, August 19th, at 9:00 a.m. on Channel 14, and this meeting can also be viewed on the city's YouTube channel.
Thank you very much. Next item, please.
Next item is approval of agenda.
Move approval.
A second. It's been moved by Vice Mayor Karpinski Costa, seconded by, excuse me, Councilmember Schaefer. Any comments or questions regarding the item? Hearing none. Do we need to do a roll call, or we got her on?
She won't be able to participate with the roll call, so we'll just do it with the four members, and then I'll try and work on getting her.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Next item, please.
Next item is public comment, and members of the public may address the city council on any matter within their subject jurisdiction. If you wish to address the council, please fill out a speaker identification sheet and give it to myself, the city clerk, and step up to the podium and state your name for the record. Members of the public are limited to five minutes each, and the mayor has the discretion to lengthen or reduce the allotted time.
I don't have any cards.
And I'll bring those to you.
Do we have any call-ins, write-ins?
I do have a couple of written that I can read at the conclusion of the ones that are here in the audience.
Okay, I'd like to go ahead and call up Daryl Mott.
And Mayor and City Council, Mr. Mott had submitted 48 hours in advance a PowerPoint to go along with his public comment.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate the time here and the opportunity to address you and also other members of Citrus Heights. My name is Daryl Mott, and I've been a resident here for 24 years, homeowner here, and lately I've had a little bit of issues. Is there any way, can you put that up in the bigger slide, the presentation slide? Cool, awesome. So I did a couple of slides here, and what I'm hoping here is that maybe my situation is similar to somebody else's.
Mr. Mott? Mr. Mott, I need you to address the council.
I'm hoping that you guys can maybe find some useful information in some of the problems and troubles that I'm going through. I kind of look at the last two years, I put up a chronological events here. All of this started off on the upper left in late 2022 in October, and there's been a series of items all the way through January 2024 that have caused me a lot of grief, property damage, et cetera. And so just to kind of give you an illustration, there's a stock market, you know, that's been really well for the last, say, two years here, and as the stock markets went up, the interest rates and other price of goods have also went up. And so, you know, what I've had is like state farm, like the guy with the mayhem. I've had mayhem at my house for like two years. So a lot of people have said, some might say to move, others might say to deal with it, some people say it's a civil issue, et cetera. So, and if you mind flipping over to the other slide. So I just looked up here, in my situation, if you look at the upper left-hand corner, you'll see a monthly expense, and this is what would happen if I moved myself personally. I have a 3% interest rate because I've been in my home for a long time, and just the impact rate of an interest rate of 3% to 7%, as you can see on the chart, is $1,800 worth of additional expenses out of my pocket. I also have the luxury of property taxes, Prop 13, and so my taxes were really low, and when I move, I'm going to incur all these expenses. So if I have to move, my mother is 83, and I'd like to stay in the area, if I have to move 10 minutes up the road, I'm essentially going to move into the same house, and I'm going to incur $2,400 a month, which is like essentially the average SSN payment, social security payment, is $1,700. And so I'm really losing at the prime of when I'm about to retire, a lot of additional income by moving. And so down at the bottom left, you can see some of the hours over the last two years as well. Hours lost, fixing my house from damage, time with my mom, which is really the most important, you know, loss that I've had, city and police time, civil issues, doctors, moving, et cetera, others. You know, at 720 hours a month, you can see I'm already in 17,000 hours over the last two years. And then on the bottom right, you can see my out-of-pocket expenses. I've also lost $27,000 of expenses because of all of these issues. I've been able to recoup $8,000 from the insurance, but the rest of it is out of my pocket. So I've had some issues about some trees and other code enforcement issues that were deemed civil, and so you can see from pre-October 2022, I had $8,000 worth of damages. From October 22 to 23, I incurred another $15,000 worth of damages because I had a tree which I thought was under code enforcement that would be removed, but it wasn't removed, and it sat there doing foundational damages. So Amy, please go to the next slide. So, Mr. Mayor, I wanted to present a list of these items to you of the things that I've been impacted with. So some of these items are my foundation damage, and I had two and a half inches raised on my patio, and I had a structural engineer tell me that I had a half an inch rise in the pier footing on the quarter of my house, in my kitchen. And so that caused a lot of cracks in the walls, damage to my patio, et cetera. I've had drones flying in my windows, I've had oil flushed into my backyard, owner claims it was just cleaning a cage, my dog ingested it, I have veterinary expenses, I've had loose dogs, pit bulls inside my garage, I've been chased down the street. Most recently, I've had some gentleman sitting out with a German shepherd in the car barking at me while he leans against the car like this, and I find that somewhat offensive, but I won't go into that. I've had someone almost hit me with a truck, then basically played music, "I'm going to, what I thought, kill you," and then did a 30-foot burnout down the front of my sidewalk. I've had both of my trash cans run over, I've had my yard flooded over 40 times on one side, over 30 times on the other side, I've been injured stepping off my ladder, stepping into the mud, I've lost my property use, I've had shots fired from my lawn, folks through rocks, and chase cars with pipes down the front of the street. I have safety and cleanliness issues, which, you know, I'm a little bit concerned with, and constant noise and late-night activities. The item in blue is the only one that's rose to the level of a police incident, so I assume that it's not criminal, and this is a civil issue. Amy, please go to the next slide. So my question's here is, you know, I'm stuck in a dilemma. I'm here, and it's like when I was young, my mother took care of me, and now that she's getting older, I have an obligation of a child to take care of her. And so how do you submit an insurance claim if there's no police report to get back my money, or to write it off on your taxes, you know, as a loss or a theft? How do you request a restraining order if there are no police reports in the system? They don't look at you in the same light as if you had some kind of substantial documentation. What do you do when a civil litigation is just more salt in the wound? You know, for instance, if I have folks that have limited financial means, and I don't mean that in a negative way, if I file a claim, the judge rules in my favor and says, "Hey, I agree, I agree, now try and collect damages," it's just like now I'm at a bunch of more time, a bunch of court costs, a bunch of money, and I'm still have all the issues that are still occurring, causing me time and issues. So at the end of the day, I'm asking, does the city need to add improved code enforcement? Should it be at the discretion of certain employees? Should it be applied for all? Do we need to step back and maybe just take a look and say, "Look, you know, I didn't realize the impact." You know, we're in a different world, and just say someone to move, I don't think people really understand the gravity of the impact of that. And so that's what I was hoping to show. One more slide, Amy, I'm sorry, I'm over time.
Yeah, I need you to wrap it up, Mr. Mott.
And so these are some of the code languages. I encourage you to go on the municipal code language, and you can read some of these things, like for the tree instance, and I feel that they fit my situation perfectly, but I was told that they did not because of discretion. So I hope that can help someone else, maybe that helps you in your situation, but thank you, Mayor, I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Mott.
Your phone.
Your phone? Thank you, sir. Next, I want to invite up David, and is it Shelton? Am I remembering it right? Yeah, come on up, David.
My name is David Shelton.
David, a little closer to that microphone, so everybody can hear you.
My name is David Shelton, and I spoke to the council last month on fireworks, and I'm speaking to the council again today on fireworks. I had fireworks issues, and I called the police department, and nothing happened. Later on, after midnight, the house behind my house on a cul-de-sac had fireworks from four different locations. It's a U-shaped, and at the bottom of the U-shaped, there are four houses, and it's very easy to shut that street off and then use the entire street for fireworks. But I didn't call, that was my mistake, because I should have called, because I didn't hear anybody or get any response from my first call, just down the street from where I live on Brookcrest Way. The city's street there is called Amberwick Way. I moved up here in 2002, and I worked with Pona, which is number five of the 11 districts we have in Citrus Heights, and I was treasurer. I was active on the Resident Empowerment Board, REACH, and on the neighborhood projects. And Sue Frost named me to the Construction Board of Appeals, and my neighbor is Rick Doyle, and he ran for the council. He also was at the Neighborhood Night Out, where I talked to Commander Webb, and it seemed like Commander Webb with the police department said there's nothing can be done about fireworks, and I don't agree with him. However, we had, when I first came here in 2002, our POP officer, which was a problem-oriented policing, and Chief Turcot was our POP officer at that time, and now he's head of the police department. The next thing is code enforcement. These houses where they were having the fireworks were just blatant code violations, like no house number on the house, so you can't find it in an emergency. They moved a storage container 16 feet long. I would love to know what's inside of it, but I can't. But you can't put a storage container in your driveway. You can't. And so I talked to Dominic Grillo, and his card looks like he works for the police department, but his office is in the police department. He is not a sworn officer. So I pointed out that...
Go ahead.
So I pointed out that... It's an echo?
It's the techno demons are getting us tonight. Go ahead, Mr. Shelton.
So I pointed that out to Dominic, and then he said, "Well, we'll take care of it." So I called him today, and I left a message, and he promptly called me back. I give him credit for that. And I said, "Look, I need to know what you've done." And he said, "Well, we mailed him letters." Well, that's because we need a record of it. But when you mail something, you don't know if it's delivered unless it's sent postage returns, receipt requested, or something like that, and most of the houses are rented, and so you don't know if you're getting the actual owner or something like that. So there's a whole code efficient. Next thing is the, the city is on a new dawn. We are able, after 20 years, to retain our property taxes if the county of Sacramento gives it to us. That gives us lots of money, and what the city has done for a long, since I came up here in 2002, our streets were, forget it. Now, our streets are beautiful in spots. They're spending a lot of money and a lot of effort, and to go from Sylvan Corners up to the city limits on Roseville, it's beautiful. They've got one lane closed off permanently, well, not permanently, but closed off for several months, to put in new sewers and all that, so that's good. But I'm interested in the budget today because of the lots, well, there's lots of money coming in, and I hope the police department gets money, because they tell me they can't do anything because they don't have any money. Well, if you enforce it with some penalties, you can get money. Finally, when I worked for the Construction Board of Appeals, on the back of the card was the mission statement, and it said, "The city of Citrus Heights is committed to providing high-quality, economical, responsive service to our community," and I thank you for letting me talk.
Thank you, Mr. Shelton.
Thank you.
Next, I want to invite up the Honorable Lieutenant Colonel Charles Stone.
Look at that.
That's a presence right there.
I feel honored that I got the echo when I walked up.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, Honored Councilmembers, my name is Charles Stone. I'm the incoming, now the new commander of Post 637 Citrus Heights American Legion. I took that over recently from Paul Reyes, and as part of the American Legion's mission, our job is to help take care of vets. We have a big vets helping vets thing. The Citrus Heights American Legion was well before the city of Citrus Heights was around. We were formed in 1955, and we've been here the entire time helping out vets. So my stake, my new priority is vets taking care of vets. In order to do that, we have to be able to partner with other groups. We take care of their vets and their families. The biggest thing we do is help them file their benefits, and when they fall down, we try to pick them up. And that's what we're trying to do here in the city. Recently, we've, have a new veteran service officer, or post-service officer, Steve Gall, who's in the back. His training, we're working on getting all this training and certifications in order to file veterans' claims and help you process through the entire system, right? Remember, we've been in 20 years of war, and that 20 years has taken a toll on its members, and we just want to help them out. That's our goal. As part of that, we've been partnering with the Citrus Heights Marching Band and doing the Battle of the Bands and Barbecues. If many of you guys remember this from the last couple of years, the Battle of the Bands and Barbecue is our biggest fundraiser in order for the fund, the Vets Helping Vets Fund. So we've been partnering with them, and we'll be also partnering with Heart to sell barbecue tickets, and so we are inviting the council members. I've already given you this, and I'll give this in the back as well. It is the Battle of the Bands and Barbecue invitation, and you have a QR code if you want to purchase your tickets. We have many sponsors. We are very fortunate, very blessed in this community that we have a lot of people who want to take care of their veterans, and those sponsors, we're going to recognize on another date. But I'm very blessed to say that we have had the opportunity to raise some funds, and we want to continue that by helping out with the Battle of the Bands and Barbecue. The event is September 14th. It's going to be at the Rush Park. We have three bands playing, along with the Citrus Heights Marching Band. We are honoring one veteran from our community, and I'm not sure if you guys are aware of Nicole G. She was a Marine who was in Afghanistan who died while protecting the 122,000 people escaping that, getting out of the country at that time. So we're honoring her and her family on that date. We asked, we, to publicize our membership, to our membership and to everyone else that hopefully they're able to attend the event, and that's all the questions, that's all that I have, unless you have questions.
All right. No, no, thank you, sir. Very much appreciated. And just for clarification, it's at the Rush Park Historic House, correct?
Correct, it is.
So some folks don't know exactly where that is, so it's over by the baseball diamonds, kind of tucked away off the yard, or, excuse me, the street, so...
Correct, and the tickets are $30 for all you can eat and all you can drink, so it's a relatively cheap price for what we're trying to do.
Very good. All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next, I'll call up Angelia Lee.
Hi, I'm Angelia Lee. I am a Director of Social Services, and I'm also the event coordinator for Coach Care Communitive. We are a nonprofit, and we have a center at 7971 Auburn Boulevard. Our mission is to secure the futures of the youth in the community, as well as help the adults by empowering them and providing them with job opportunities and trainings, and we also want to do fun events for free for the businesses and people of the community. Sorry, I'm a little nervous, y'all. So we're, we want to let you guys know who we are and pretty much ask for your support to help us open. Right now, we put in a lot of our equity to get the center going, but we still need a little help. We have volunteers, and we have a lot of services that we're using of our own. So I'm pretty much here today to let you guys know we're here, we're here to help the community. We've also done things for other communities around Sacramento, so we're just pretty much spreading the love around in Citrus Heights. We do see there's a need for tutoring and job placement, and also help with the homeless, so we are here to do all those things. We're here, pretty much, we just want to let everybody know who we are.
So are you a 501(c)(3) nonprofit?
Yes.
So we have a program going on right now for funding for some things, just like you're saying.
Yeah.
So I would say, reach out to the city, or maybe somebody could reach out to her just as she sits down, and hopefully there's something there.
Yeah, yeah. Did you guys have any other questions? I know I kind of rushed through it, but...
You did really good.
Thank you. I appreciate you guys, and looking forward to working with Citrus Heights.
All right, thank you. Next up is Melissa Hayden.
As most of you guys know, I'm an animal advocate here in Citrus Heights. Been working with Citrus Heights Rescues Animals on Facebook to try to bring our community members together, along with our animal services and you guys, to make sure everybody's on the same page of how we can make our community a little bit better. I've had a few discussions, worked with the city, we did 40 TNR, as you're aware, and that went really well. Now the city is begging and asking for more TNR. I had to rack my brain after talking to animal services and asking for more TNR. How are we going to get it? What can I do? I literally went door-to-door asking people for donations so we can try to get more appointments, which I don't feel it's fair to ask people to use in this time with the incomes people have and the recession we're in, to ask people for money for donations, for TNR. But I mean, that's what I'm going, I have been, and I asked. So the question is, how can we get a better TNR program in this city? After talking to our animal control director or lieutenant, I found out that when we did have animal control, we had, to the TNR program, we had two animal control officers. We now have two and a half. How can we still not have animal control? So I went and investigated a little bit into the money, the finances, and how can we fund this? One of the things that I concluded was our city is no longer taking advantage of the grant programs that are accessible to our city for animal funding. It's also available to help build shelters, food animals that are homeless, for TNR programs. We can access those programs and for the grants, so I don't have to come up here and ask you guys for $5,500 a month for TNR anymore. And so I think our city really does need to look into getting our grant writers out there and getting those grants processed to help us, help our community, because we have gone from 2021 with zero grants, zero TNR, zero rescue, being able to help the city with TNR. Back then, we had, if you just have one cat from 2021, you're looking at a, just one cat, mom and a dad on our streets, you're looking at 327 kittens today, cats and kittens today, just from one cat. That's talking about one neighborhood, one cat, and you know how big Citrus Heights is. These colonies have not been contained, and I would really like to see us utilize a better program and get back into something I understand we are doing, Bradshaw, and that is going to help. But we also, for our city, having that lack of for so long, we need to get that control back. So if, I'm asking the city to please get our, utilize our grant writers and the grant programs. If you guys want to know some of those grants, I have done the research, I know who they are and how to get the grant request out there. So please, I'm requesting that so we can have TNR and help our city be a better place, because we have had way too many different diseases between FIV, FELV, and also we had the Panluke's positivity over by Food Max on Sunrise. I really would like to see, instead of having our animals, our community member animals die because of disease, that we can actually solve this problem with one simple solution, and that's getting control of the population with TNR.
Thank you, Melissa. Thank you for what you do. I'm sure we'll be connecting with you regarding the grants.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next up is Andrew Wells.
I'm just a person, community. I'm here to speak also on behalf of a TNR program. Where I live, we have a colony of feral cats, and it has exploded over the course of the last two years. Last year, I was able to capture five, and I had to pay out of pocket to get them fixed and then returned. I would like to extend some gratitude to you for the 40 TNR appointments that we did receive earlier this year. That was tremendously helpful, and I was able to take advantage of some of those spots. However, with that being said, there are still several cats in my neighborhood that need to be TNR'd, several of which I'm aware that are pregnant. There's also several colonies in the surrounding areas that I've been trying to help with and trying to do what I can, and unfortunately, some of those places, they're not able, there is an apartment complex where a mother cat has been for five years, producing litter after litter after litter, and her babies don't always make it. Sometimes they're run over or taken by coyotes, and that's very upsetting for the community that they're in. They all have, they name them and take care of them, and then they get hurt. So I think having something in place to help with that would be very helpful. That's, that's all.
All right. Thank you, Andrew. Thank you very much. Next up is Monet Noe.
So I came here today just in support of Melissa, so I wasn't really prepared to talk, but I'm just kind of frustrated because I went into our backyard, and we have a mama cat and five little kittens. And so I feed one feral cat that's in my front yard, and then she came shortly after that, and she never would come up to me or anything, so I was like, great, I have a feral cat, and I'm never going to be able to catch her, but I was able to persuade her that I'm a nice person, and she's now in one of our spare bedrooms with her kittens, and they're just adorable, but it's just kind of frustrating because I've, I did call Citrus Heights, and they told me to contact Placer, and then Placer's like, "Sorry," and then this place is like, "Call this place," and a lot of people are having to reach out to small organizations because, you know, they're a little bit more willing to take on, you know, some of it, but right now they're just so full, and, you know, this place told me to call that place, and so I've called so many places. So right now, I'm just at a point where I'm fine with having them right now until they're old enough, but like, it's just frustrating because there's not very many options out there, you know, and I don't necessarily want to pay out of pocket. If I have to, I will, but, you know, somebody else's irresponsibility lies on other people, you know, so it's just a little bit frustrating, but does anybody want a kitten?
You're supposed, if you bring the kitten?
I, well, I said...
Will we take it?
I asked her, I'm all, "Should I bring a kitten?" Like, will that help? They're so cute. So that's, that's just my...
Thank you. Oh, I didn't even know, I didn't even know she was here. Jeez. Karen Berman.
How could you not?
I knew. It's good to see you.
Good to see you, too. I'm here this evening to speak in regards to animal control and TNR for the homeless cats in our community. Trap neuter release, furthermore called TNR, is desperately needed in Citrus Heights. Volunteers need funding to feed these colonies until they can be TNR'd. I've been helping Melissa with the cats and kittens from the burnt-down house. We all know what that is. They are so used to her routine, they come running when she pulls up because they know she's going to be feeding them. Feeders build a rapport with the cats that make it easy to get them into traps and be vetted, but the feeders are paying for the food themselves, and they need help. They need money to get these cats, to trust them, to get them into traps, get them spayed and neutered, and be returned. The boots-on-the-ground officers, Ruben, Tony, and Alexis... The boots-on-the-ground officers, Ruben, Tony, and Alexis, they have been awesome, wonderful people. Kudos to them. As for the animal control officers during the week of 4th of July, they were doing their job perfectly. I wasn't at, I wasn't able to be at this last meeting, because I had an emergency at my own house, with my own dog. And, but I wanted to let them know, the city neglected to inform the public, the city, that we had a temporary shelter set up in the police station. We could have taken those 14 dogs that on Monday morning were schlepped up to Auburn at a cost of a lot of money. We could have taken them and got them returned to those people that night, or even the next day. We could have taken those, and said, people held on to them and then called on Monday, because animal control wasn't open, but they were. They just weren't informed. I had posted something on Facebook that said, I'm going to be at the police station. I've got a temporary shelter. If you find a dog, bring it to me. I've got a microchip, a microchip reader. I was able to do everything right then and there, and could have gotten the dog back to the owner that night. One person did see that and brought me a dog. About quarter to midnight, we're just getting ready to pack up and leave. I mean, Ruben had been on since 8:00 that morning. He would not like him having to go to. So I fostered that dog, and I posted that dog all over Facebook, all over the internet, saying, I found this dog. Tell me about this dog, if it's yours. We found the owner Saturday.
Oh, good.
They contacted me, said, that's my dog. I said, okay, meet you Monday morning at the police station. The dog was returned to its owner. Happy, everybody was happy, and it worked out. We could have done this, you know, the whole time, had the city let it be known that there were people working, and there were volunteers at the police station with a temporary shelter set up. So, another thing is, TNR again, we have grant writers that are employed on the staff. We need to utilize those grant writers to get us funding. And there are hundreds of places that will fund, will give grants for animals, animal spay and neuter, vaccines, microchips, food, whatever you need for an animal. They will fund it. We just need those grant writers to get to writing. If they can write for a street that's been a problem for the 35 years that I've lived here, and try and fix it up and make it nice, which isn't going to happen, but okay, or a mall that we don't even, the city doesn't own, they can write a grant to help the animals that are here. And that's it. I'm done. Thank you.
Karen, if somebody wanted to help out with the purchasing of food, or whatever, how could they do that? How could they help you or Melissa, or whatever, with that?
All they have to do is let us know.
Well, I mean, how, how, how do you want us to tell them? Do you want to give a phone number? Do you want to give an address? Do you want to go have them say, go to Facebook or something?
You can also donate through animal services. I've been told that animal services will help us. They under, they know that they are help, what colonies to help, and stuff like that. And they, we are in contact and partners.
Put the food and the money.
The food can be donated.
So they can get hold of our animal services?
Yes.
To help towards those cats?
Yes.
Okay, so that's, there you go. Thank you, guys. Thank you very much. Next up is April Ludwig. April, there you go. Oh, you know what, April? It says, you want to be heard for, I have number nine, yeah? Thank you, April. We'll put that to the side for a minute. Okay, Sharon Chandler. Triple team, huh?
My support team. Good afternoon, mayor and council members. My name is Sharon Chandler. I'm the executive director of Yes to College Educational Resources, Inc., in Sacramento. And these are my, my communications director, Deanna Vescal, and my master gardener, Ye Manya Ne Pue. And we're here today to just let you know about what we do, what we've been doing for the past 25 years, almost, in the Sacramento area, working with minority African-American, in particular, targeted families who have children and want their children to go to college. I personally know how to raise kids to go to college. I've done it twice. So I'm two-for-two. That's pretty good. So we're here today to just talk to you a little bit about our programs. We're mainly a three-program organization. One of our programs is the Saturday Scholars Academy, and that, under that title, we work with parents and students in a Six Steps to Raising College-bound Students. We want all of our kids to go to college, and if not college, then some other form of higher education. Another program is African-American Women's Health Legacy. And we created that program to work specifically with African-American women and girls, because they are the ones who control and gauge the wellness of their families, because they, they nurse the babies, they buy the formulas, they feed the children and the families, and they, they do, have had that kind of control over the health of their family. Our third program is the Minority Health Professionals Mentor Program. Every July, and we just, just completed our 11th year of African-American healthcare professionals, providing mentor services in the form of telling their stories to children, and letting them know that they had, they suffered some of the same circumstances, but look at me, I'm a doctor today. And look at me, I'm a nurse, or whatever. So what we do is, we, we have a four-week program in July, where we take the kids to the clinics, the doctors' offices, the hospitals, and show them what it's like, and let them see healthcare professionals who look like them, working in the, in the different healthcare occupations. We also take them on field trips. We do Zoom presentations. We, we just completed a couple of field trips, where we took kids to the National Black Nurses Association's conference in San Francisco. They were able to see hundreds of African-American nurses, and aspire to those, to that profession. And then we also took a group of kids to an African-American-owned ranch by a woman that lives in Castro Valley. She has horses, and they had, they were able to interact with all the animals, and learn what it's like to care. We're talking so much about the care of animals here tonight. The kids learned of the different careers that are associated with caring and raising animals, that they could aspire to. Another program of ours is the Mini Garden Program, where we work with seniors who live in apartment complexes. We teach them how to raise a patio garden with, you know, tomatoes and zucchini and okra. And they do this with our assistance, and at the end, they, they also have nutrition classes that they participate in, and we talk about, excuse me, changing their menus and eating healthier. But the main thing that I like, I like to say about the garden program is that it not only shows people how to raise vegetables, and some of them have a history of raising their own vegetables, but it also builds community. You see these seniors who are isolated, who don't trust a lot of people, don't have family members who to come and visit them. They form a community of helping each other take care of their vegetables, if someone's sick, or if they're out of town, or if they're in the hospital, or if they just need help. So I want to, I don't know how much time I have, but I want to ask.
You've got three seconds.
How many?
Three seconds.
Three seconds.
Okay, it's over.
We really think it would be amazing to bring a successful program from such a local neighboring city to the city of Citrus Heights, and we're working toward doing that now. Thank you so much for being the city since, you know, the late 90s, and we hope to be working together.
And, and did you mention where you're located?
Yes, we're located in Sacramento, in the Oak Park neighborhood.
Okay, very good.
Can I get your name of the organization again? I didn't hear it.
Yes, Yes to College Education Resources, Inc., and it's college with a K. I do know how to spell it correctly.
Yeah, I've been in Citrus Heights for the last three years, and I was one of the women of Citrus Heights about, what, 10, 10 years ago.
All right, very nice.
Just as a representative of the Network for Healthy California.
Thank you.
Champion Mom for Northern California.
Very good. All right. Thank you, folks. Thank you so much. Next, I want to call up Anna Romeo.
I apologize that I was late. It's back-to-school night for some of our high schools. So my name is Anna Romeo. I am a high school counselor at Encina High School, and I live in Citrus Heights. I am also a cat foster, a kitten foster, with the Placer SPCA. I have been volunteering in cat rescue, doing fostering and trap neuter return for over eight years now. I'm from the Bay Area, so I started doing cat rescue in San Jose. And when I moved up here, I was very disappointed to learn that there are not free, nor accessible, spay and neuter options here in Citrus Heights, nor in Sacramento County. And even though there are not these options, there is a huge need. As a high school counselor, many of my students and families know me as the Cat Lady. They know that I foster kittens, and almost on a daily basis, I am asked to help with kittens. There's a kitten in my yard. I rescued a kitten. A mom just gave birth to kittens. Can you please help me? And I can't, because the shelters are full, the rescues are full, we fosters are full. Cat overpopulation is a huge problem that is affecting everybody, and it is especially prevalent here in Citrus Heights. And so the only way to deal with it is to give free, accessible spay and neuter services. And I know that this, obviously, is going to take resources, it's going to take time, it's going to take effort, but like many things in life, if we do the preventative, it can actually save us time, save us money, save us a headache. And so basically, accessible trap neuter return options are good for cats, they're good for taxpayers, they're good for the citizens of Citrus Heights. And so I beg you to take this seriously, and to do everything you can to make this possible. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. My last public comment, I'll call up Savannah Daniels.
Don't forget school's starting.
She wanted to say, don't forget school's starting tomorrow. Drive safe, watch out for the kids, and have a good year.
All right, thank you. I wish she was that quiet at home. Amy, do we have any?
I do have some written public comments, and I just wanted to check. We had received an online speaker card from Jeannie Lewis. Was she in the audience tonight to speak? Otherwise, I'll read her card. So from Jeannie Lewis, she states, 14 years ago, we had a petition to remove the no-U-turn sign, because it is the only way for Sunrise Vista Mobile Home Park at 6525 Sunrise Boulevard, for us to enter our park. Now I see, in the last couple of days, they put it back up. If they didn't fix the street right, so we can make U-turns, then they need to fix it right, not just put up a no-U-turn sign. The next written comment is from Laura Carter in the state. Hello, my name is Laura Carter, and a resident of Citrus Heights. I'm concerned about homeless having a safe place to sleep and maintain their personal belongings. Please practice compassion and maintain their dignity and provide for their human needs. The next card is from Ivan Demeyenko, and I apologize for the mispronunciation. I hope this message finds you well. I am writing to request that the issue of homelessness be added to the agenda of the next city council meeting for discussion. Homelessness is a growing concern in our community, and I believe it is important for us to address it promptly. By including this topic in the upcoming meeting, we can explore potential solutions and collaborate on ways to support those affected by homelessness in Citrus Heights. Please let me know the process. That was just for submitting the request. The last public comment speaker card I have is from Dale Patton. Would you like to come up to the podium and address the council?
Good evening. My name's Dale Patton. My wife and I are homeowners on Hoops Drive in Citrus Heights. We have been since 2001. I was in the first Citrus Heights marching band when it first started. We became First City. And so I'm very proud to live in this city, but we've had some terrible problems on our street of a new homeowner over the last couple of years, as Darrell spoke about earlier, and I just wanted to comment on that. I wrote to Councilmember Mary Jane Lopez Taft on July 24, 2024, with concerns of a home on Hoops Drive in Citrus Heights. And I appreciate the quick response. She connected me with the police. And Commander Frey has been fantastic to work with on working on my complaint, and I wanted to say that publicly. But the traffic with this home still exists. Even today, at 7:15, a young person on a scooter met with the owner, one of the people that lives there. There was a quick discussion. He's, the owner left in the car. He went through their trash, went through the neighbor's trash, went into the backyard, and who knows what happened after that. And this is a common occurrence on our street, where we don't know the people coming and going from this home. And there's been an overdose, a narcotics arrest in the last 60 days. And this, this isn't a neighborhood that's like this. We raised our children in this home, and now the next generation on our street is raising their children. And it's impacting their personal safety, and also our financial ability in our homes. And so the other problem is that there are different tenants every week at this place. And we don't know who's coming and going. It goes all night long. And these tenants leave their broken-down cars out in front on our street, and they also sleep in the cars on the street almost every night. And so, as I said, we feel our safety is, you know, compromised with what's going on. I appreciate working with Commander Frey. He's been fantastic. But I also want to leave it with the, the council and the mayor of what, besides the impact team, can be done to help us with the trafficking that's going on at this house, and, and we don't want to be confrontational. We don't want this to turn into something else. We want to be good citizens and do the right thing.
Thank you. We cannot engage in a back-and-forth regarding this specific item, but you're heard, definitely, and we'll follow up with PD and hopefully make a positive solution.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks, buddy. That is all I have. Amy, do you have any others?
That is all of the written public comment that I...
Very good. Next item, please.
The next item is comments by council members and regional board updates.
Is Councilmember Middleton able to hear us and speak?
Yes, she can hear us, and she can also speak as well.
Oh, I can't hear you.
Do you have it on mute? Is your micro, is it on mute? Can you hear, can you?
We don't read lips.
Nope, we can't hear you.
We can read lips.
Can you try again, Councilmember Middleton?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Yes, there we go.
How about some applause?
Yay, Portia!
Oh, gosh, all of that, and I only have just a couple of comments. One, apologize for not being in the council chambers today. I'm at a Cal City's conference downtown, and couldn't make it back in time. And also have another meeting coming up this evening with them as well. But I wanted to make sure to reiterate what Savannah said. You know, school starts tomorrow for our San Juan School District students. Please, please, make sure you're safe. Take a little bit extra time to make sure that you're able to get your kids to school and get yourself to work on time, and make sure everyone stays safe out there. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Lopez Taft.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Had kind of a quiet break, I think. But I did do one very interesting activity. I attended my public, Sac Public Library Board meeting, and that was fairly uneventful because the meeting prior was about the budget. But the most interesting meeting I attended was a Sunrise Park and Rec Board meeting. For those of you who don't know, you are paying for our wonderful parks and recreation that we have available in our community. And it was really interesting to find out. Again, I'm kind of a budget junkie, and so I went to their budget meeting. And, you know, it's amazing how much we can do with so very little. And I know everyone here understands that, especially in this economy. But it was so nice to participate as someone who can be a regular citizen and hear all the good things that are happening in another agency that is so closely entwined with our city. So kudos to the Sunrise Rec and Park Board and their hard work. Of course, I participated in National Night Out. I really enjoy not only the festivities of the evening and getting to know our residents, but also getting to know one particular police officer that evening, who is my escort. And so for, I don't want to get his rank wrong, but for Officer Aguilar, thank you so much for keeping me safe and entertained and hydrated the entire evening. But it is a wonderful time for us to really get out there and meet our neighbors in a safe way. And the whole intention of National Night Out is that we meet our neighbors so that we can, as a community, keep each other safe. Because the more you know each other, the better you can know when someone does not belong in your community. And as we're hearing this evening, that is so important. And my comments would not be complete without also giving kudos to Chayson, who always is a rip-roaring good time for National Night Out. We have quite the party at Sebar Sea Park. And earlier this past week, I also attended a very well-put-together City Scoop event at Lykan Elementary. That was just one of the most wonderful events. It was located just in the right place on the campus. And I think I also met someone who I know from another part of my life there. And she reminded me that she is a very excited, continuing longtime resident of Citrus Heights. So it's nice to hear that feedback whenever we have fun events as well.
Councilmember Schaefer.
Well, thank you, Mayor. So I also attended National Night Out. I was escorted by Commander Wells and Ellie. For those of you who don't know, Ellie is an awesome police dog. She's amazing, and she's still just barely turning one-year-old. So we had, we visited the Park Oaks neighborhood. That's where I actually chatted with Dave Shelton, who spoke earlier. Then we went over to Ridgey Court, another great gathering. Lots of, lots of great participation in National Night Out. And then we went over to the Garden Gate Community over in, like, Area 6. And that was also very well-attended. They actually had a food truck there, and it was a, it was a great event. Got to see and talk to lots of folks there. So I also attended City Scoop at the Lykan School. I think there were some 700 or 750 attendees there. Quite a lot. And so I've been, we've been on a break from, I sit on SECOG, and I sit on the Policy and Innovation Committee there. Tomorrow, we have the SECOG Board meeting, so we'll get back right on, right back on our schedule again. So I will have more to report for the next meeting. That's it, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor Karpinski-Costa.
Sorry. While you guys were on break, I was busy. I've been busy. So July 16 was the last mosquito meeting. There's another one coming up, but here's the news on mosquitoes. This year, they are much less than prior years, like half or less. But they are in our city. They are positive pools at Rush Park. And so I'm hoping I gave extra repellent to the heart people to give to the unhoused that housed themselves over there. And so remind everybody to use repellent. We've had several positive pools in our city. I did have a dead bird on my front lawn. They came, got it, reported back. It was a little house finch that died of other causes than West Nile. But to remind people that there is statewide, it's less this year. So, you know, you say, is it the heat? But one of the issues is, is that when it's a bad year, so many birds get wiped out that the following year, there aren't enough birds around to carry the virus again and get it back into the population. So next year may be worse, but this year is a little easier. But it's still time to use some repellent because we do have positive pools, mosquito pools. Pool is where they put a whole bunch of mosquitoes in a trap, and when they test them for the West Nile, they just test all the mosquitoes in the trap. So there might be 20, 30 mosquitoes in the trap, and that's a pool. So it's a positive pool. So then I also, that was on the 16th. I did, Stones had a thing on the 18th, and Portia, you were there. We were there, but the event really didn't take off until later in the evening, and by that time, I went home. So I wasn't there for the final, whatever they did. I did a vice, the vice mayors of all the cities have lunch every now and then. So the last one was, I hosted one before. Folsom hosted the first one. Sacramento City hosted the next one. This last one was the guy in Galt. And so I got to go down to Galt for lunch. And Galt is quite an interesting little city. They did pass a one-cent sales tax, and they did quite a bit with their city downtown. It's very impressive. They restored their police department, which we did without the tax. And so, but anyhow, it was Rich Lozano is the vice mayor there. I was impressed. I don't remember Galt looking as good as it looked. And we took a couple of pictures, some cool signage they had. I'll show it to you because it's kind of cool signs, Wayfaring signs that are kind of cool. I did do National Night Out. I went first to Area 6 and 2, 2? 2? Had an event, Advent Lutheran Church event, and it was, I want to thank my escort, which was Tiffany Wells. We became BFFs for the night, so that was kind of cool. She is in charge of our animal services. And so it was a nice conversation we got to have. And she was very attentive. So you ready? So after we left there, we went over to the Chayson event, and there was the food. I mean, the food truck at the first place was food truck. The second place at Chayson was food everywhere. I mean, there was, you just turned any direction, and there was something to eat. So I really appreciate, including the watermelon was really good. And so nachos were good. It was all good, all good, 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 good. I went to a, because the mayor was out of town, I went to the Sacramento Transportation Authority meeting. Nothing great to report at that meeting because they usually isn't. But they're doing a redesign of their website. And when they get it up, the interesting thing is to watch where your sales tax, that half-cent sales tax, went for the last 15 years. So you can, when they get it up, it's not there now. I looked for it, but eventually, there's going to be a list of these, because it's a 30-year tax. And so they're looking, here's what we did the first 15. And hopefully, they're going to try to hit you again with another request coming up. So, but you can see what they've done with the money, where they've put it, all over the county, some things in our city. I went to a sewer meeting this morning. Nothing really happening there. I am going to Orlando in October as part of an awards. Potentially, we get an award for our ECO treatment plant. I'm looking forward to that. So more on that when I get more information. But that's, I am planning that trip. Yesterday, yes, we did, we did a selfie at City Hall yesterday, where employees and our city manager, whoever, we all stood in front of the city hall and took a selfie. What's that going to go, someplace? What's that going, Portia? What's that going? League of Cities wanted it. So somehow, we got that. And what else is that? Oh, one last thing. I've gotten, because Auburn Boulevard is in my district, and I've gotten a couple of emails from people that says, why are these trees, these beautiful sycamore trees, three beautiful sycamores, all these wonderful eucalyptus trees and certainly other trees are being chopped down to make way for more cars and more pedestrian traffic and beautify Auburn Boulevard? I say that, that was 10 years ago, we did that plan. The city did that plan. And had it been done now, it might look different, but it's the plan we got. So I just wanted, we got an email recently from, from General Services to what's going in. They're putting in, for the trees that are leaving, they're putting in 17 thornless palo verde multitrunk trees. I looked those on the Internet. They're nice, they're kind of pretty. Desert willow, 20 of those. 44 Chinese pistachios, which is Councilmember Tim's favorite tree. Two pyramidal oaks. And 20 zelkovia, oh, they're beautiful. Zelkova, green base. One of them is a messy tree. I hope you know that. One of them is very messy, it said. It was described as a messy tree when the yellow flowers are beautiful in the spring, and then when the yellow flowers fall off, it's messy. So, and if anything goes wrong with that tree, it's due to overwatering. So don't overwater a messy tree. So other than that, those, for the, for the information for people who say, where, you know, how many, what's the mitigation on all the trees you're chopping down? There's quite a few trees going back in there. And they are only 15-gallon trees, and some of them only grow two or three feet a year. But, you know, your children will enjoy them, and so they're there. And I think that's all I got. Oh, one announcement. Can I make one announcement? I'm Polish, proud to be Polish. The 33rd Annual Polish Festival, mark your calendar, is Saturday, September 7, at the Polish Hall in Roseville from 12 to 5 p.m.
All right.
And they have Polish butcher, food beer, polka dances, fun for the whole family. Polish style.
Sounds like fun. Thank you, ma'am. Okay, for me, just a few things. Monday's What the Mayor Continues. I had a great guest this last Monday, day before yesterday. A lot of fun, actually, from, from the moment I walked in until the moment I had to beg to leave. So if you're interested and want to come in and talk on Mondays, I'm there from 9 to noon every Monday at City Hall. Come on by if you want to tell us something great or if you want to come in and complain about something. Don't hesitate. Next up, we have an honored guest in the audience, and I just want to point out that Kermit Scholz is here. He operates Stones. If you could stand up, Kermit, for a minute, just so that we could all give you a round of applause for the great job you do. And then the TNR people, I want to know, you're being, I want you to know you're being heard. You're being heard. Things are moving forward. We hear you, and we're responding. National Night Out was incredible fun. Went over to Park Oaks, had a hamburger, went over to Lakeview, had some ice cream. Went over to Woodmore Oaks, which was the first time I've ever been to their National Night Out area. And oh, my God, you know, probably well over 100 people. It was just jamming. But it was wonderful. Unfortunately, my other council members had great escorts. I had to go around with Chief Turcot. And, well, you can understand, you know, so, no. It was a great escort. We, you know, had two pursuits, I think it was. And so he's, he's, no. He's always a good time, but commentary was wonderful. Thank you. And then I did, as it was mentioned, just come back from the Mayor's Innovation Project Conference in Knoxville, Tennessee, where I learned a few things, but it's just been too recent, and I'll have to do a report on it maybe next meeting. But some good things came out of it, and hopefully, we can share those. And that's, oh, I, actually, I want to thank Savannah Daniels for coming in tonight and reminding us that the kids are going to be starting school and reminding her that she's going to need to get home here in a minute with mom and get ready for bed to get to school, okay? And that's it. Next item, please.
Next item is consent calendar items four through seven.
I need to pull item seven.
Pulling item number seven. Anything else?
For separate vote.
If there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion.
And I'll move items four, five, and six.
Here in Echo, Echo, Echo. Okay, anybody else?
I second.
Okay, it's been moved by, excuse me, Vice Mayor Karpinski-Costa, seconded by Councilmember Schaefer for items four, five, and six. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Lopez Taft?
Yes.
Councilmember Middleton?
Yes.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Karpinski-Costa?
Yes.
And Mayor Daniels?
Aye. Item number seven, if you could read the item, and I think we don't need a presentation, do we? Just read the item, and then we'll call for a vote. Unless somebody else has something.
Item number seven, the subject is authorize city manager to execute a purchase agreement for the acquisition of a portion of 6498 Sylvan Road. And the recommendation is to adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a purchase agreement and joint ESCO instructions with Bayside Covenant Church of Citrus Heights for the acquisition of a portion of APN 2430031023.
Any questions of staff? Any motions? I will move the item as read by the city clerk.
I'll second.
Any questions or comments regarding the motion? Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Lopez Taft?
Yes.
Councilmember Middleton?
Yes.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Karpinski-Costa?
We don't need it, and I think our money is spent better somewhere else, so my vote is no.
And Mayor Daniels?
Aye. Next item, please.
Next item is public hearing, item number eight. The subject is 5425 Sunrise Boulevard, request for letter of public convenience and necessity. The recommendation is to move to approve the letter of public convenience and necessity to allow the issuance of a type 21 and type 86 alcohol license for the sale of beer, wine, spirits, and instructional tastings at the proposed grocery store located at 5425 Sunrise Boulevard.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Casey Campagnari, Community Development Director. Tonight, I'm joined by our newest Planning Division member, Stephanie Louie. So tonight is her first council meeting, so welcome her. It's a night of first for Stephanie. She's also today closed on a house, her first house here in Citrus Heights. So she's our newest resident as well. So it's a big night for her. So Stephanie's going to give you a presentation tonight on the letter of public, letter of public convenience and necessity. So I'll turn it over to her.
Thank you, Casey. Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Stephanie Louie, Assistant Planner on behalf of the Planning Division. Tonight, I will be providing a presentation for the letter of public convenience and necessity for the grocery store at 5425 Sunrise Boulevard. So just as a refresher, a letter of public convenience and necessity, or PCN, is part of ABC's review and issuance process for the sale or manufacturing of alcoholic beverages. A PCN is required by ABC when a census tract is over-concentrated with establishments that sell alcohol. ABC only issues a license if it's approved by a local jurisdiction. In this case, a city council is that determining body. So this PCN request is for the new grocery store opening at 5425 Sunrise Boulevard within the Sunrise Village Shopping Center. The request is to allow the issuance for a type 21 ABC license, which is the off-sale license for beer, wine, and spirits. This is typical for a grocery store. It also includes a type 86 ABC license for instructional tastings. ABC standards will be followed for alcohol sales, such as ID verification. And for the instructional tastings, all employees and supply partners who engage in instructional tastings will be certified with ABC's responsible beverage service training program. So the reason for the PCN is due to an over-concentration of type 21 licenses within the location census tract. The census tract is 8138. The number of allowed licenses is based on population. And due to the lack of residential development within the census tract, the over-concentration is pretty typical for commercial areas. So in review, this was forwarded to our police department with the security floor plan and calls for service at this location. They have no objections to the issuance of the license. In addition, we also received a letter of support from Kathy Lynn Carpenter on behalf of the Sunrise Marketplace. This letter was also provided as an attachment to the staff report package. This next slide shows a map of the existing general off-sale retail ABC licenses, which is the type 21 within Census Tract 8183. The star shows the location of the proposed store. Within that vicinity, there are only three active licenses within 1,000-foot radius of the store's location, one being a liquor store, one a convenience store, and then the Smart &amp; Final Grocery Store within the neighboring Census Tract. One being a liquor store, one a convenience store, and then the Smart and Final Grocery Store within the neighboring census tract. Here's the recommended motion. A representative from the applicant is president tonight in case you have any further questions.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Before I open the public hearing, any questions or comments from staff? For staff? Now go ahead and open the public hearing. Any speaker sheets, Amy?
I do not have any speaker sheets.
No speaker sheets, I'll close the public hearing. Now, any other questions or comments of staff? No? Any motions?
I'd like to move that, to move to approve the letter of public convenience and necessity to allow the issuance of a type 21 and type 86 alcohol license for the sale of beer, wine, and spirits, and instructional tastings at the proposed grocery store located at 5425 Sunrise Boulevard.
I'll second.
Oh, okay.
It's been moved by Councilmember Schaefer, seconded by Vice Mayor Karpinski Costa. Any questions or comments regarding the motions? Hearing done. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Lopez Taft.
Yes.
Councilmember Middleton.
Yes.
Councilmember Schaefer.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Karpinski Costa.
Yes.
And Mayor Daniels.
Aye. Motion passes. Next item, please.
The next item is regular calendar, item number nine. The subject is resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a grant recipient agreement between the City of Citrus Heights and TLCS DBA Hope Cooperative for the Auburn Oaks Project. The recommendation is to adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a grant recipient agreement between the City of Citrus Heights and TLCS DBA Hope Cooperative for the Auburn Oaks Project.
Good evening, Mayor. Vice Mayor Nicole Piva with the Community Development Department. This item is a funding request from Hope Cooperative for the Auburn Oaks Project. The city is proposing to use its permanent local housing allocation, also known as PLHA, to help fill a funding gap. Auburn Oaks is located at 7501 Sunrise Boulevard. The facility shown here was built in 1975 as a senior transitional residential facility. In the early 1980s, a portion of the facility was converted into assisted living. In 2020, Goodwill leased the property to provide housing and senior supportive services and did some minor rehab to the facility. Since then, Goodwill's funding source has ran out, and there's been significant turnover and several challenges at this property. Senior affordable housing with supportive services continues to be a need in our community, but the building is dated and needs some significant rehab. It is exciting to announce tonight, Hope Cooperative, a nonprofit providing behavioral services and supportive services. Two people in Sacramento County for over 40 years was awarded a $25 million community care expansion grant from the California Department of Social Services. This grant allows Hope Cooperative to purchase the property, rehab the property, and operate the property as permanent supportive housing for seniors with special needs. By Hope Cooperative purchasing this property with grant funds, it allows vulnerable seniors an opportunity to live in a safe community while receiving essential services. If otherwise, the property was sold at market rate, our seniors would not have this opportunity. Eighty-eight units will be rehabilitated into studio and one-bedroom apartments. For seniors to be eligible to apply for housing, the head of household must be 55, homeless, or at risk of homelessness, and the household income must not exceed 50% of the area median income. So for example, a one-person household, the maximum income is $41,300, and a household of two is $47,150. These income limits are released annually, so these are the 2024 income limits. At the time of the senior income eligibility, depending on when they apply for housing, these income limits may increase or decrease. Residents will be referred from partner agencies. So of the 88 units, 30 of them will be referrals from County of Sacramento Department of Behavioral Health. 30 units will be referrals from Sacramento County Department of Family, Child, and Adult Services. And the remaining 28 units will be referrals through the Coordinated Access System that's managed by Sacramento Steps Forward. Operational components to this project, it will be professionally managed and operated. Hope Cooperative will provide services in case management. And the property management and resident service staffs will always be present 24 hours, 7 days a week. So why allocate PLHA funds? Hope Cooperative did approach the city due to a funding gap. This project will expand capacity to serve our vulnerable seniors who are experiencing homelessness or at risk of homelessness. And there's a lack of housing that gives priority to applicants receiving social security, especially our seniors. Hope Cooperative is a responsive service provider with extensive experience in delivering a high-quality results. Just real quickly, our PLH program, PLHA, is a permanent local housing allocation. It provides a permanent, ongoing funding source to local governments in California for housing-related projects and programs that assist in addressing the unmet housing needs of our local community. PLHA is a continuous annual funding stream that's passed through the state. The city does receive an annual allocation, and the city's contribution of PLHA funds will be used for the acquisition of the property, so it is an eligible activity. Project funding for this project, so we're proposing to use $500,000 of PLHA funds, and this amount will fill the funding gap to purchase the property. And there's a variety of other funding sources. As I mentioned, Hope Cooperative received a grant of almost $25 million. Sacramento Housing Redevelopment Agency, SHRA, and the county have contributed funding along with the county behavioral health as well. And Hope Cooperative is also contributing money. So the total funding for this project to rehabilitate it, to purchase it, and some operating costs is just a little over $30 million. So the recommendation is before you. Also, I'd like to mention April Ludwig, CEO with Hope Cooperative, joins us this evening to speak on behalf of the Auburn Oaks Project as well.
Okay, is that the end of the staff report? Thank you. Any questions or comments for staff before I call April up? Go ahead.
I have a question. So we have resident allocation 30, 30, and 28 between the three agency groups. What if one of them is undersubscribed? Does that seat or apartment remain vacant until they fill it? Or can there be some negotiation between, you know, the other agencies for vacancies?
We'll have an agreement with Hope Cooperative that'll be, some of those details will be figured out a little bit later, but we are, part of our MOU, our agreement is in place already with this action. We'll limit the behavioral health beds to 30. I think we're willing, we're open to opportunities to make sure that all the units are filled as much as possible so we can work with Hope on that.
Thank you.
Is that it? Any questions, comments?
Yes.
Go ahead, Mr. Schaefer.
So are City of Sacramento residents eligible for this?
There is not, they could be, yes.
So is City of Sacramento making a contribution? I see we got a county.
That was my question.
Sorry.
No, it's good.
I see that we have contributions to county, but I don't see, I mean, if Sacramento's city is eligible for to place people here, I think they need to be part of the solution as well.
I think it might be best for April Ludwig to explain how they do their placement first, and then maybe we can bring that back up in a minute.
Is that it?
That's it.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and call up April Ludwig.
Good evening. April Ludwig, CEO of Hope Cooperative. Thank you so much for the consideration and the recommendation to... Oh, sure, absolutely. April Ludwig, CEO of Hope Cooperative. Thank you so much for your consideration of this motion. More than happy to answer questions.
Okay, that was easy. Okay. I'll start with a couple of questions. Yeah, go ahead and stay right there because I don't know who might answer the question. Obviously, the units are not strictly for people from Citrus Heights, then.
That's correct.
However, can we prioritize people that live in Citrus Heights currently for the units?
So I'll answer that. So we can't, it's illegal to geographically profile. But what we can do, but what we can do is that, one of the things that we talked about before is when we have people who are dock-ready, which basically means that they're in our Coordinated Access System, and they put down Citrus Heights, we can work with the city for a homeless navigation team to prioritize those individuals. We know that that's a consideration, and we know that that's important. We want to make sure that people are in areas that they're comfortable with, that they're familiar with. And so we can prioritize in terms of individuals, as long as they have their documentation done and they're in the Coordinated Access System, which is done by SAC Steps Forward.
Okay. So you probably answered it, but how does the list then compile? Who creates the list? How do you know if you're number one on the list, number 30 on the list?
Yeah, good question. So Sacramento Steps Forward really takes support of looking at all that information, working with homeless navigation teams. And so those team members look at where the individuals kind of land in terms of if they're familiar or residents already of Citrus Heights. And so if information is added successfully into HMIS, which again is through the Coordinated Access System, individuals identify as Citrus Heights residents. The homeless navigation, that's not through Hope Cooperative, so I want to be clear about that. But the homeless navigation team looks into that and tries to put people or place individuals in areas that they've identified as home or their residence.
So the energy needs to be with Sacramento Steps Forward on it?
Correct, and their homeless navigation teams as well.
I think I'm hearing you, okay?
Yeah.
And then it's 55 and over, but there are one bedrooms, and can more than one person live in a unit? And if more than one person can live in the unit, can the other person be under 55?
So what we've identified, and again, I think Casey spoke to that a little bit in terms of still identifying some of that, but for us, what we're hoping to do is to make sure that it actually is a senior 55 and up community. And so what we try to look for is are there partners in terms of individuals living together? We do understand that there's a concern about like little kids or other individuals in the community. We're doing our very best, but that will become who's referred and who's actually coming through the property.
So I want to be clear on this.
Sure.
Kids.
Can kids live here?
Yeah.
55 and under, or 55 and over, if we have parents who are 55 and they have kids who are 12, 15, we don't break up families. That's not the goal.
So can it be restricted to simply just adults? Are we being gentle here? Here's our concern. We have an issue already, and this issue is very close to this complex, and it's an unintended consequence, but I'll just say it out loud that, you know, we opened up another apartment complex similar to this but not senior, and it has had a negative effect on the local school. And I think we need to be very careful with that. We're talking about 88 units here, which could be a whole lot of people, and I'm concerned, I'm very, very, very concerned with the issues that I've heard, that I don't want to further burden that school.
Sure.
And so I think I'm hearing you right, but we'll go from there. Any other questions? Go ahead, Mr. Feeney.
Mr. Mayor, I could help out on this, too. I think there's a couple of things I wanted to hit on that April spoke to. One, you were asking about Citrus Heights residents and if there can be some sort of prioritization. And from a fair housing law standpoint, we cannot have that, but from a marketing standpoint, I think based on other past projects, getting the word out quickly to make sure that our Citrus Heights residents that would qualify for this project get on that list early. So that's something we've had a lot of dialogue with members of the Hope team on and our own staff to ensure that we're early on this. The other thing is there's 25 of those units there that are for at-risk. And that means when it's saying at-risk, that's somebody that might be suffering elder abuse or at risk of homelessness. And more often than not, on those at-risk beds, they try to keep people that, within the at-risk community that have an active at-risk case, in their home community. So it's very likely that those 25 beds that are at-risk, you'll see a number of those being Citrus Heights residents. That's my understanding of that situation. And so that is something that you'll likely see some Citrus Heights, you know, prioritization there because those are county placements. So they're already working with cases here in Citrus Heights. When it comes to the notion of having a child potentially present at the project, I think it is a possibility that if you have somebody that's 55 or older with a child that's under 18, that they could qualify and have that child there. Now, when that child reaches 18, my understanding is they would need to move from the facility, so it would have to be a minor. And I think that it's very likely, and I look to you, April, in your experience with these 55 and older communities, that's probably the exception to the rule relative to that situation, that's more often than not that most of these units, if not all, are adult residents?
That's correct. And again, it's, the exception is typically when we're talking about parents. Right.
And I just want to comment, too, this is, you know, with the city council's goals on homelessness prevention and providing services, certainly this opportunity speaks to, you know, kind of our multi-pronged effort relative to homelessness prevention. And we also understand that it's very important that these projects are very well managed through professional management. And we've had a lot of discussions, and then also as part of this MOU, or this grant agreement, rather, there are some stipulations in there that give us some local control over the resident kind of mix, if you will. And that was part of this funding agreement, too, to ensure that we have a project that will be a benefit for Citrus Heights with what we're trying to accomplish relative to the city's council's goals and priorities, but also ensuring that we have some say in kind of that mix that you saw, the 30, 25, 25 mix, if you will, that's laid out in the agreement. So I just wanted to kind of hit on those, but definitely from a homelessness prevention, you know, looking to, trying to provide services, this is one of those tools to prevent homelessness here in Citrus Heights. So that's why we're bringing this contribution forward.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Karpinski Costa, did you have something?
Yeah. I'm not sure it prevents homelessness in Citrus Heights. The way I'm hearing it is we're helping with the overall homelessness issue countywide. And so I think, and I agree, that other cities should be pitching in because we're solving their problems, homeless off their corners, their public access place. I'm not sure why we're paying in for $500,000 for everybody else. That's one concern. 55-plus could be a grandparent, and a lot of these people are recovering from drug abuse or alcoholism. And if you are putting a kid, and even though you, your family unit is good and above, you know, you're next door to somebody who is not. So it's kind of close proximity. I've been in these apartments. Yeah, they're close together. And I don't know what our local control is, you know, do we have some sort of oversight of all of these problems? But I'm really concerned with the financial part, that other cities should be pitching in. I don't understand, if they have funding, why aren't they using some of their funding or putting up housing that are homeless? We have a homeless in our city to deal with. I'd rather take $500,000 and build a bunch of tiny homes and stick everybody in them.
Can I respond to that?
Yes.
So the homeless, people experiencing homelessness, our police department can tell you, it's a very migratory group. So there's not necessarily, while we have residents that are here in Citrus Heights that are homeless, we see new people all the time from out the county. So this is a solution that gets at homelessness prevention here in Citrus Heights, and it's a county-wide issue. I mean, we know that's a statewide issue.
Are there similar places like this out throughout the county?
Absolutely there are. And the bulk of this funding is coming from the state. There's a $25 million grant coming from the state. Sacramento County is putting in significant contributions that's laid out in that Exhibit A of the grant agreement. We're putting in a contribution, when you speak to local control, the city doesn't have a say, per se, on this project. a say per se on this project. The grant has been awarded to Hope. Hope's a good operator with a good reputation and has a plan on how to turn this project around. This property will be fully rehabbed, which will be a benefit in of itself to the city if you're familiar, I mean, I know the council's familiar with the current condition, but for members of the public, it's in poor condition. It's in poor shape. It's a challenge and a problem right now here in the city. We have a lot of calls for service and then around the area, and so, this would certainly be helpful from that standpoint. If the city said, okay, well, I'm choosing not to contribute. One of the things that is a benefit of making the contribution is we're having a say in the makeup of these units. For instance, thirty of the units have an opportunity to have a behavioral health placement. And so, those are individuals and residents that need additional services, and you want to make sure that a project's not necessarily overburdened with folks that need a high level of service. One of the things that, if the city did not make a contribution, there are plenty of money available out there through the state and the county where they say, okay, well, if you'll take on thirty more of these units, we'll give you the five hundred thousand dollars that Citrus Heights didn't. And then, we have a project that has a mix that's not necessarily great for the residents there or our community. So, that's where we have some local control on this funding agreement, is to ensure that the mix is good for the project, making sure that the people living there, it's a good environment for them, for those that need behavioral health services, they're in an environment where they can get that and treatment and get better. And then also for, you know, kind of our surrounding community, making sure that the mix is something that is good for everybody else. So, we do have local control through this grant agreement. That is something that I think is important to note in response to your question.
Mayor?
Councilmember Schaefer.
Thank you. So, I do have a question. So, let's say that this, we have some folks there that come in there with some really serious behavioral health issues, okay? And it turns into a problem. What's our recourse? How do we unwind this?
I think the first thing I would start with is that we do assess individuals for what their needs are. We have case managers who do this work, who work with individuals who have behavioral health concerns and challenges, and we create a plan to help support them as they are and to help mitigate their concerns as they continue through services. I will say very clearly that for individuals who we are unable to help, and it is hard to say that because our goal is to help everyone that we can, but for anyone who we are unable to help successfully and we cannot provide additional services, then we look at alternative options for where they should live. Because we do want to make sure that we're placing individuals in a safe community with safe neighbors. And if we can't do that, then we have a commitment to those who will stay there to have, to ensure that those individuals are moved on successfully somewhere else.
Okay. So, I want to go back to my original, was there something you needed, Amy? Did Portia have something to say?
I was just going to acknowledge that Councilmember Middleton had requested to speak.
All right. So, I'm just going to go back to my regular, my original point is if we have people placed here from the Sacramento city, which they, I know that they have issues and they're not contributing, it just seems like, it just, that just doesn't seem like a very equitable solution.
But isn't it probably true that we have people that are in Citrus Heights or had been from Citrus Heights who probably took advantage of other sites outside of Citrus Heights similar to this?
I don't know of any.
Well, I mean, there's other facilities, there's other...
Do you have other facilities?
We do. We have other projects.
Where are they?
Throughout Sacramento, Citrus Heights.
I mean, if you think about the shelter beds for the region, those are all in downtown Sacramento, something that we're not burdening with right now.
And we also run OEC, which is our outreach and outreach engagement center, which can take anyone in Sacramento County, and that's for shelter beds as well.
But I've spoken with the homeless people, and they do not want to go, they will not go to the shelters in Sacramento.
Some individuals will.
Our local population here, I don't know, I speak with them pretty frequently, and I don't know of anybody who wants to go to Sacramento for shelter. They would rather sleep on the street here than go to the shelter down there.
I'll go to Councilmember Lopez Taft, and then Councilmember Middleton.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for being here tonight. My question is kind of in a different vein. So, when I think about return on investment, so our investment currently is looking at five hundred thousand dollars, but there are other burdens that we also end up bearing, which primarily is our police department. And so, how do we factor that in? And maybe you have the answer, maybe our city manager has that answer, but I know that there was quite, for me, it was a lesson to learn with Sunrise Point was, okay, did we factor in the idea of increase, quite an increase in police calls to the area, which also goes to our fire department, which is county, and our paramedics and things of that nature? So, how do we counterbalance not only the investment we make, but the additional services that are then required as a result of resident needs?
Absolutely. I appreciate that question because what it does is it makes us really consider who our residents are, what are the services that we're wanting to provide. And I think more than anything, it talks about partnership, talking about those opportunities to sit and have conversations about what our needs are, what we're seeing in front of us right now, and what that might need to look like in order to continue to work with our partners. So, I think what I've learned based on that question is partnership, 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 and really bringing the right people to the table at the very beginning to talk about what can we do to do some prevention. I think that's one of the themes I've heard here tonight, is about preventative measures and how do we take those. And one of the things that we do, I think really, really well at Hope Cooperative, is we reach out to our partners, we talk to our partners, we're transparent, and we say we need help, and when we, we also say that these are the areas that we're working on. So, I think one of the things that we continue to do is ensure that we're being transparent, we're being open, and we're not trying to hide anything because we don't want anyone else to be surprised by that. We do, when we need resources, we're gonna, we're gonna utilize them. I think the difference here too, though, I want to say, is we're talking about fifty-five and older, fifty-five and older. So, those resources may very well be a necessity in terms of individuals who need assisted living care, individuals who may have medical concerns. I think that one of the things that Citrus Heights does well is make sure we take care of our community members.
Yeah, I'm really concerned about the cost involved, you know. We have a history of working well collaboratively. What we don't have, in exchange for that, being open and available, is how then do we compensate for our, you know, police force dedicating X number of hours, which translate to, you know, for example, two FTE police officers that we as a city have to now compensate for as a result of two high-need locations.
Right. I would say that I think a consideration is also to think about very different populations as well, and what does that look like? So, I don't think that they're quite apples to apples.
If I can add, I was fortunate to be able to do a ride-along with our beautification crew and PD department, and it was interesting, this site does have a number of continuing issues, as it is today, that the PDs continue to address. I think Nicole had the same experience. She did her ride-along the same thing, and so, it is resulting in a significant call for service just based on the condition and lack of full occupancy. So, in talking to our police department, I think, you know, they would agree that having the business, this site fully occupied with people that are under, getting services, is going to be a better outcome and less impact on the community than its current state.
I think for my own reassurance, I would like to see those comparisons. You know, I don't, I don't know how PD does that, but I would love to hear what those numbers are because I, we already know that we, we very much enjoy the level of service in our city for our police department, and every, every call, you know, and it's not just singular calls, we've had residents come to our neighborhood association meetings from Sunrise Point, and that's very disturbing, you know, the fact that we have an extraordinary number of calls, and we can track it because we have great reporting systems as well. So, I would love to see some information for law enforcement calls.
Councilmember Middleton.
Thank you, Mayor. I think we're getting away from the real topic here, which is the fact that this was previously a fifty-five and over community, and if we do not do something to help these individuals, we will have more individuals who are on a fixed income, who do have behavioral or mental health issues on the streets. And our goal here is to make sure that while we saw our last pit count, and we've had our counts from our local PD, that our numbers are low in the region for a reason. It's because we're proactive and we take these chances and make sure that we provide the housing services that are necessary. It's not going to be perfect. I recognize that. I come from working in this space myself as a deputy director previously for a housing nonprofit. However, when you do have services and you keep individuals from becoming homeless, it makes it a lot easier for them to maintain services and to make sure that they're not falling back into those old issues. It was already, like I said, a fifty-five and over older community. I think we're just kind of trying to force things to fit into neat little baskets, and that's not what this is when it comes to our senior population and those who are on the, on the cusp of becoming unhoused. So, not really a question for the individual standing there today, but more of a comment of support and understanding.
Is that it, Portia? Okay. Yeah, a couple of questions. There's been a little bit of touch on what the special needs category might mean. Can you give us a little broader explanation of who might come here and be eligible to come here based on special needs?
Absolutely. So, when we talk about special needs, we're talking about individuals with disabilities, physical disabilities, some mental disabilities as well, mental capacity in terms of needs and support and services, individuals who may need case management, a person to help them with some functioning that some of us might take a little bit for granted because we just have that ability already. So, individuals who may need a little bit more support, handholding, to get them to the next level of success for themselves.
And would it be reasonable to say that those with behavioral issues are people who are currently under control with medication, if you will, or some other way to deal with those behavioral issues so that they don't spill out into the community?
So, I want to...
And I know nothing's perfect with that.
Yeah, for sure, for sure. I want to remind us that we haven't leased this site up with us being a part of this development yet. So, to say that, it means that we are, we would be taking referrals in. And so, I can't speak to how everyone or those eighty-eight-plus individuals may look, but what I will say is that some of those individuals will absolutely have behavioral health challenges, which is why we support them with case management. Some of them will be on medication. We would make sure that they're having medication, management, support in terms of their medical services, making sure that they're managed on the medication if they're prescribed as such. Now, I want to also say that we can't force anyone to do anything, but we will be by their sides, helping them through those challenges that they may suffer.
Okay. And is rent charged to these folks at all?
So, based on the services that the individual may receive, there's a small, there's a portion of rent based on individuals who would be coming into the home.
Okay. And then, my memory is, and I might be wrong, that when we talked about Sunrise Point coming online and all that, that there was some sort of background check done on folks that would come to live there? Is there any kind of background check that happens here? Do they check for sex offenders? Do they do anything like that as they bring people into the community?
So, what I want to share is that's, we're talking about coordinated access system, and so, they do have documentation and certain things, criteria that they do check for. I don't do that part, so I just want to, I want to say I can't answer all of those questions, but there is a criteria checklist to make sure that individuals can be, the hope is that people can be housed successfully.
Absolutely. Absolutely. But also, we have a responsibility...
Absolutely.
You know, to the community and the people that live here.
Absolutely. There are, there are specific criteria that individuals must meet to be placed in permanent supportive housing.
And the age of fifty-five, is that set in stone, or can it be raised to sixty or whatever?
Fifty-five is what we're, what we're saying for individuals because there's a bigger, I mean, there's twenty-eight, twenty-eight individuals that can absolutely come into the, to the property in terms of the separation. So, you have thirty units for behavioral health, thirty units for adult protective services. And so, what we're hoping for is fifty-five. We're seeing a younger and younger community of our seniors who are needing support. It's our most vulnerable population right now as well.
And I think I understand and agree with that, but do you know, is your typical client a certain age? And is it, if you do know, is it above the fifty-five mark usually?
It's typically fifty-five and plus.
Okay.
Fifty-five and over.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Go ahead.
That's just a question for Casey probably. If you, where does the PLA, PLHA money normally go? What do we normally do with that money?
We've allocated that for different things. At one point before, I believe Nicole corrected me wrong, once before Supervisor Sue Frost had helped us with Community Health Works, that money was going to be used for that. You'll hear later tonight that we do have a source of money coming in that's a different pot of money that, so we've kind of moved things around, I guess is the short answer, but generally, it is restricted to housing-related services. So, at one point, we talked about using it for Sayonara for part of that, but that'll be covered by a different pot of money that's coming in now. So, generally, it's for housing homeless-related services is what we've been allocating it for.
Okay.
Yeah, you know, I'm going to say something about the money side of it. I don't really know that we need to be concerned about the level of money, and that might be a surprise for me to say, but we're talking about a half a million dollars in a much, you know, larger project. And so, it's money that we have there, that we have there for this kind of thing, but where my concerns come in is not the money at all, it's the other issues and the impact on the community and some uncertainty. So, that's where I'm at. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Any motions? I would like to make a motion then. I think, I'd like to see us continue this item for maybe two weeks to come back and maybe answer some of those questions and concerns that councilmembers have expressed tonight.
I'll second that. That's a motion to a motion.
I don't know that we need a motion for that, but I agree with the mayor that we'll bring this item back in two weeks and expand on why the recommendation is to fund this project.
We don't need a motion?
Correct. No motions, Dean.
Okay. All right. Any other items or, excuse me, comments or questions? Okay. See you back in two weeks.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Okay. Next item, please.
Next item is regular calendar, item number ten. The subject is County of Sacramento Animal Shelter Services Agreement. The recommendation is to adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with the County of Sacramento for animal shelter services.
Well, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and councilmembers. Chris Frye, Special Services Division Commander with the Police Department. And with me this evening is one of our Police Services Managers, Tiffany Campbell. Tiffany currently oversees and manages our records unit, our rental housing inspection unit, our code enforcement unit, and our animal services unit. This evening, we are here to present for the council's consideration, a recommendation to enter into a contract and to partner with the Bradshaw Animal Shelter in Sacramento County as the new animal shelter vendor for Citrus Heights. Now, to provide some background on how we got here this evening, back in March, we received notification from Placer County that they were no longer able to provide sheltering services for Citrus Heights beyond December of this year. Some of the stated reasons included a significant cost increase for sheltering, as well as an infrastructure and capacity challenges that they were facing. Placer also advised that they needed to limit services to allow for shelter availability to serve the citizens within their county. After receiving this information, our staff began researching all other regional sheltering alternatives, and with the exception of Bradshaw, all other regional shelters were unable to accommodate our needs due to similar capacity limitations. After several months of strategic planning meetings, a mutual beneficial partnership was established with the Bradshaw Animal Shelter. Tonight, we have two individuals with us who are key in forging this partnership. First, we have the Director of Brad, of the Bradshaw Animal Shelter, Annette Bedsworth. Annette has over thirty-five years of experience in public service, fifteen of which she has worked as a Director for Animal Services. Annette joined the Bradshaw Animal Shelter in February of 2022 and will be available this evening, should the council have any specific questions pertaining to Bradshaw's facility. Next is the Officer of the County 311 Operations, Jason Taylor. Jason has over fifteen years of experience as a regional director focused on operations and customer service-based practices. Jason joined the County 311 Operations in February of 2023 and has led his team to be recognized as the number-one award-winning communication center in the United States. Jason will also be available for us this evening to answer any questions that the council may have specific... be available for us this evening to answer any questions that the council may have specific to Three One One's facility. And to expand on the newfound partnership with Bradshaw, Manager Campbell.
Thank you. Good evening, council. Forming a dynamic and engaged team is a key component to the success of any partnership. Staff found partnering with Bradshaw is mutually beneficial and in alignment with our city's long-term commitment to provide affordable and compassionate animal services to our residents. Partnering with Bradshaw is also in alignment with our city's strategic planning goal to preserve and enhance public safety. This partnership supports local pet reunification, responsible pet ownership, licensing and microchipping, education to reduce overpopulation, pet wellness to prevent behavioral problems, and community outreach and engagement. An executed contract with Bradshaw offers multiple service enhancements to include access to local Sacramento County Animal Shelter, access to the County twenty-four-seven Customer Call Center known as Three One One Connect, dispatch services for our dedicated Citrus Heights Animal Services Officers, utilization of animal-specific software known as Chameleon that helps to facilitate pet reunification, full-service licensing of animals for city residents, onsite hospital with dedicated veterinarians seven days a week for shelter animals, low-cost spay-and-neuter clinic, a PAWS mobile clinic services for pets owned by our unhoused individuals, community cat program by appointment, offering services directly next door to the shelter at the community spay-and-neuter clinic. It offers access to our fundraiser events and participation for our community volunteers, as well as our officers. There is access to a drive-through microchip clinic. Low-cost and free vaccination clinics will be afforded to our city residents. And in the future, we're excited to say that we could be part of the 2025 Mobile Animals, Animal Sterilization Clinic known as MASH. This partnership allows for all Citrus Heights residents to partake in all programs that the Bradshaw Sacramento County Animal Shelter offers to all county residents.
So at this time, staff is recommending the city council to adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a five-year agreement with the Bradshaw Animal Shelter in Sacramento County to be effective on September first, 2024, through June thirtieth, 2029, with the option of renewing the agreement through July first of 2031. And at this time, staff welcomes any questions that the council may have.
Any questions or comments for staff? Go ahead, Councilmember Shaper.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your hard work on this project here. And it's a, it's a huge undertaking. And from reading the staff report, I kind, I do get a sense that kind of all the shelters are having capacity issues. And the question I would have is, once we get into this agreement with them, what if they run into capacity issues? What if the Bradshaw Animal Shelter now has capacity issues where they're unable to, to meet the, meet our needs under this contract? So, and I, I want to say, make a statement beyond that, and that is, how did we get here? We got here because we weren't spaying and neutering our animals. That's really, that, that's the only solution here where we can meet the capacity is if we step up the effort to spay and neuter these animals that are, we're, we're having to shelter. So I think it's kind of smarter on the front end to spay and neuter as much as possible rather than on the back end worry about sheltering animals. So that's, I realize that's, that's more than a question, but what I would say is, my concern is, how do we make sure, how do we ensure that they're going to be able to fulfill this contract, that we suddenly were, you know, everybody's out of capacity? And how do we, how do we make sure that we're not going to run into the same problem again in six months?
Thank you for that question. I will answer it, and I will also ask that we save part of that question for the Director who runs that shelter operation, because you are correct, all shelters across the United States are facing capacity issues. It first begins with licensing your pets. And one of the most important things is licensing and shipping. And this, a dedicated software at this particular shelter that we did not have access to before, and we will now, populates that database so that we could return those pets to owners. That is extremely helpful. The other thing that we have to help this population issue is when the animal is brought into the Bradshaw Shelter, in intake, it is chipped. And that is really a tremendous thing in this day and age, because we do want those pets, of course, to be adopted, and then those pets themselves are in the database, if you will. The best way that I could explain this database is, in a DMV situation, we understand that DMVs keeps track of plates and cars and where those belong. And this particular partnership affords the opportunity to utilize dedicated animal software that keeps track of the animal and where it lives. So that's first, foremost, and primary, is access to licensing and shipping. The second piece to that is, of course, spay and neuter. And having access and the programs and the staff at a shelter in our county to help us facilitate the programs themselves and the staffing inside the shelter to help spay and neuter these pets. Any shelter pet that we bring into Bradshaw is spay and neutered. That in itself is a tremendous increase for us. Regarding spay neuting, neutering in general, that is a huge undertaking for any community and in any city, and with capacity issues, and of course, there's multiple programs and ways to do that, pet unification is always the best. So in that particular part, when we get to, if, if, with your permission, I would like to wait to save on the capacity issue directly for Director Bedsworth, because I'm confident that she has the answer for that, for us.
Absolutely.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments right now?
I have tons of questions.
Tons, right now, or you want to wait?
Ask Mary Jane, Portia first.
Okay. No questions? Did Portia act, act as if, or, excuse me, say that she had any questions? Okay. Just real quick, did you say every pet that goes to the animal shelter is spayed and neutered?
Yes. Director Bedsworth, would you like to join us at the podium?
I'd like to.
Thank you. Would that be, meet the council's pleasure?
So I'll start with that question. Somebody finds my dog, I don't have a dog, somebody finds my dog and takes it to the animal shelter, you're going to spay or neuter my dog before I can get it back?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Annette Bedsworth. I am the Director of Sacramento County Animal Services. So a couple of things, it is required by law that any animal that we adopt out has to be spayed or neutered.
But if I, it's, but if you reunite me-
But if you bring in your fluffy, fluffy gets lost.
Or you find my fluffy and I come in to get fluffy.
And you get fluffy, we do offer you a bargain deal. For fifty dollars, you can get your animal back. We just want it spayed or neutered before it leaves.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
We waive all other fees.
Mandatory.
It is. Spay and neuter is the game.
For fifty dollars, they're spayed and neutered? Or do they have to pay for this?
That's our bargaining. You pay me fifty dollars, I'm going to spay your animal, and we'll waive all the other fees to get it reclaimed. And it works.
Very nice. But it's, but it's optional.
It's optional, but we, money talks.
Yes.
People don't want to pay hundreds of dollars. It is.
No, I'm not disputing that. It's a great deal.
If you don't get it spayed, then the bill is huge.
Yeah. And then before I maybe have you say a few words, let me ask about this part. It's a five-year agreement. You know, we're hoping to do some things maybe here locally someday soon. Is there an opt-out before the five years if we decide to opt out?
Yes. If the city decides to opt out within the five years, they can absolutely do so without penalty.
Okay, very good. Okay.
Yes. If you're going to go before she, I have a couple, just let me ask a couple of questions. Okay. So there's one on our page, oh geez, three of our staff report. This is probably a question for the-
Mark, one please.
Sorry. Okay, one on page three of our staff report. It says, "This program offers appointments on a first-come, first-served basis, allowing community members to receive service for two cats per person monthly." So that means in a year, I can bring in twenty-four kitties? Me? Or does that mean?
Yes, those are for community cats.
Does that mean all the city?
Those are for the community cats, otherwise known as TNR.
Oh, okay. Okay, that's your TNR cat. Okay.
And those are free.
Okay. So then I have some other questions. I got a list. Thank you. Let me move over here. So when, when, when people adopt an animal-
Yes.
From Citrus Heights, you keep that adoption fee?
Yes, we do.
And you keep all the fees? When people are-
It doesn't recoup, it doesn't recoup the amount of money that is put into the animal, especially for the spay and neuter surgery.
Okay. So any, what fees do you get from our residents that we get back? So licensing, you give us back-
Dog licensing.
Hundred, hundred percent?
Hundred percent.
So does that mean we're eliminating sending our licenses to Texas? We're not, we don't license in Texas anymore? It goes back that?
We are working through that process now, but ultimately, yes. The licensing will be going through the Bradshaw Shelter using that dedicated software that we're speaking about.
Okay.
So all that information will go into that, and specifically, we can accept that over the counter.
Right. And you transfer the data to the, to the database?
Exactly.
So do, does, do our animal control officers have direct access to that database, or do they have to go to your, to the, Bradshaw and say, "I, I need to?"
Oh, no. It is web-based, and they absolutely have access, as well as staff, such as myself and the commander, and others that need that to track animal numbers, which is very important.
Okay. And then I saw that we have two dedicated officers. Is those our officers or those ours plus two more?
We have our, we still have our same dedicated animal services.
But we don't get two new ones?
No, not at this time.
Nice.
But thank you.
What a nice. All right. As, as she does her thing, I'll look up some more of my questions.
Sure.
Okay, go ahead.
I, I think the important question that I'd like to address really tonight, because I've heard it from everybody, is spay and neuter, right? And you can call me Mrs. Bob Barker because I'm definitely an advocate of spay and neuter. If you're as old as I am, you know who I'm referring to. But spay and neuter is the hottest topic, and I'm not just going to just say Sacramento County. It's everywhere in directors. Spay and neuter is the hottest topic everywhere. And it's not about resources, you can quote me on that right now. It's not about resources. I have a seven-digit contract for spay and neuter services. It's about capacity, spay and neuter capacity. We cannot find capacity. We're all fighting for those slots. And some of the things that we've discovered is, we have group meetings. I've had a recent meeting with Elk Grove Animal Services, SAC SPCA, Sacramento City, and Placer, and we're all struggling with capacity for spay and neuter. It's not about money right now. It truly is not. I have a contract with Nextdoor, as she mentioned earlier, about you can spay and neuter your community cats at no cost. But also, those, those appointments are limited. I don't get the full amount of what we're paying for in the contract, because they don't have veterinarians who can perform these services. Most veterinarians, there's a shortage of veterinarians nationwide right now, in case most people don't know that. There's a shortage of veterinarians. We are very honored, and knock on wood, that I have three full-time veterinarians. Elk Grove just hired one. They hadn't had one in months. So they're struggling, because as you can imagine, every animal we adopt out, cat and dog legally has to be spayed or neutered to be adopted.
How many surgeries do you do a day with three vets?
Three vets?
You said, do you have three veterinarians?
Yes, we do.
How many surgeries?
Each vet usually does about twenty spay and neuter surgeries that are in the shelter. Our third vet is a newer vet, and she's going out and serving the homeless community. And that was given to us by a grant. But high-quality, high spay and neuter is definitely in demand, and we're looking for that anywhere we can go. And right now, we have a contract with SAC SPCA, same thing. Annette, we can't, we're going to have to limit your surgeries this week because I don't have the veterinarian capacity to serve you. So spay and neuter is very, very difficult.
The good news is that there's now, there's, they just got, the legislature approved a program for that new technique that's going to put them on an assembly line and get them through. So I used to be a spay and neuter veterinarian, so I-
Very good.
So I kind of compassionate towards the, the job. But I don't think I ever got to, twenty a day was pushing it, you know, it's like-
Yeah, they can do upwards of fifty cats a day if they're really good.
Oh, cats? Well, you-
But what's significant, and the thing is that we're trying to do to move forward to increase our spay and neuter. I did receive some funding to expand the size of our hospital, because we need a, we have a beautiful, huge shelter, but our hospital's very small. And when you're trying to do multiple animals, you need a bigger space. So that is coming in 2025. We also were able to secure a grant this past year through the ARPA Fund that secured that funding to serve the homeless people, because believe it or not, they do care for their animals, and they do want them spayed or neutered. We have a veterinarian that is dedicated to that. It's called PAWS. And we have a mobile spay and neuter unit that will also be accessible to you. She's already been told. She's very excited to come and serve this community of Citrus Heights. We also have increased the dollar amount, looking at trying to get contract veterinarians to come and help us with services for spay and neuter. And I just increased their contract to a hundred and eighty dollars an hour, and we're looking for veterinarians to fill that role, and that'll commence at the end of this year. But again, they have to have those abilities to spay and neuter. That's very critical for us. So spay and neuter is the answer. But again, it's not about resources right now. It's finding veterinarians who will spay and neuter. One of the other grants that we got, you've heard, it's very, very popular, is the MASH-style spay and neuter clinic. It's like the hottest thing. In fact, this morning, we just released appointments for the September clinic. This, I had to really fight for that money that we got for the MASH spay and neuter clinic, because I had to call local veterinarians in Sacramento County, and I called over a dozen. A lot of your veterinarians are not even performing spay and neuter. We just kind of take that for granted as a community that they're spaying and neutering. They're not. They are so overwhelmed with just trying to treat our sick animals, they don't have time to spay and neuter. More than half of the veterinarians I spoke to don't even perform spay and neuter services, because they're so busy and so overwhelmed. A lot of your twenty-four-hour clinics are shutting down. There's only a few in Sacramento County that we can utilize because of the overwhelming of animals. Because during COVID, again, during COVID, everybody got pets, right? And they're not, they're not, you know, owner surrendering them like you hear rumors, but they need treatment. Animals need treatment. So you have over an abundance of animals out there that are trying to get through veterinarians. So again, it's not about resources. It's about finding veterinarians. So I, I hear people's complaints all day long, and I'm just letting you know, we're trying to work together. I had a lady call me in South SAC. She's like, "Annette, can you give me twenty appointments?" I go, "I'm struggling for appointments. I have eight hundred cats in foster care right now, eight hundred, to save lives. And I'm paying a clinic time and a half prices so that I can get eighty cats in on a Saturday." And that is only going to make a small dent. And the focus is always, you've got to spay and neuter them, because as we know, cats will start reproducing in a very short, a short time period. So you're keeping them in foster homes, and you're trying to work through this spay and neuter. We're pretty fortunate that in Sacramento County, we do have a huge foster base that wants to save cats. So that helps us a lot. And we also have a huge adoption rate for cats here, very successful. We do have, last month, we had a record-breaking, we adopted out eight hundred and sixty-three pets last month alone. So we do have people that do come and adopt dogs and cats. And to your question earlier about capacity, let me just tell you, that was the number-one question in my mind when Citrus Heights approached us on this, because we are all struggling with capacity. It's something I deal with each and every day. And it's a way of, when somebody, when that question, that challenge, I consider it a challenge, it's like, we're going to figure this out, because we've got to start doing things differently. That's the only way we're going to overcome this. And your capacity, your limit of intake was like five hundred animals average. And I'm like, okay, really think about that. That's only average one to two animals per day over a year's timeframe. We've got to start thinking differently, how to get these animals out so we don't consistently run into this capacity issue. So I will just tell you, for an example, approximately a year ago, when we had all the flooding that happened, and it was in January, and January is usually a very slow month for us in animal sheltering. Cats and dogs are not usually reproducing. They're staying home quiet, and it's a calm month. But with the flooding, our shelter was overcapacity by sixty percent. It was crazy. So we thought, how do we get these animals out and get them out alive, because that's ultimately our goal? And we were able to. We just thought of something different. We started holding like late-night adoption events and publicized. So we started staying open until Saturday nights until nine and PM, and really promoting that. And it worked. We were able to get sixty animals out a day when we started hosting some of those events. Some other things that are coming down the pipeline this next year, there's a lot of new things, and they're new. So, you know, I don't know if they're going to work or not, but we have to try something new. Because the naysayers were out there, and they're like, "What do you think you're doing, taking on Citrus Heights and bringing on more animals to your shelter?" I'm like, "We're going to figure this out, because we are very, very good." And so one of the other, I want to share one of the other new things that we're doing, is I looked at the numbers recently, because at the previous shelter I worked at and ran, we had a very high success rate, but the number-one adopters resided outside of my county. They came from the Bay Area, they came from the South, they came from Sacramento, number-one adoptions. Here, when I just recently looked at the numbers, like last month, ninety-nine-point-five percent of our adopters come from Sacramento County. So why am I continuously marketing my same area? Because if you live in the Bay Area and you fall in with fluffy, you're going to drive an hour to adopt that pet for me. So I have some marketing ideas that I have, thank goodness, a great full-time PIO, a Public Information Officer dedicated to animal services. And we're talking about some new strategy and how to attract those new adopters outside of Sacramento County to help with some of that capacity issue.
So-
So to follow up on that, so you mentioned that January is a fairly slow month for you. What's a really, what months are really busy for the sheltering?
Every month after that. And especially the summer is bad, if most people don't understand. But it's cat season, is what we call it. And cats multiply fast, very quickly.
I think we're primarily talking about $500 dogs a year or so.
500 dogs and cats.
That's the number I've kind of heard. I haven't really heard a cat number, only kind of a dog number.
It was total 500 dogs and cats together.
Oh, 500 dogs and cats total? Okay.
It's doable.
Okay.
We're going to make it work. We have lots of great programs that are lined up and ready to go this next year. And I'm very excited about what the future holds. And I think this is a great partnership. I think it's great for the community of Citrus Heights. I think it's great for the pets and that's what we're all here for.
So what do you do when you're at capacity and you don't have any more kennels or anything like that? How do you manage that? Do you just call up and say, hey, Citrus Heights, sorry, don't bring us any more animals. We don't have any room. How do you manage that piece?
I don't believe in doing that. We get very creative because the public needs our services. We get very creative in the fact that dogs, we will take in, no matter what. So a lot of times with dogs, we have to pair up because kennels are really supposed to only hold one dog. But we'll pair them up and we'll get them out. And we come up with some creative adoption strategies. And this public's, the community that we serve seems to respond to us.
So you're on a campaign recently, Clear the Shelter, correct?
Yes.
Was that you, that was your facility?
Uh-huh, and that's again, another strategy because we're fortunate that we are in Sacramento County. So any given day of the week, CBS, NBC, Telemundo, they all want us available. So we're trying to make ourselves available. We had Telemundo out there today doing live TV. So we were on TV today at 5:00 and then again, tonight at 11:00. But it's really accessing those resources that are made available to us and really promoting, is Bradshaw is the animal shelter that you should be coming to for services and coming to adopt. That's what we want everybody to be thinking. And that's the reputation that we're going to throw out there and really start marketing.
Thank you. That's all the questions I had, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Three questions. Do you still print Heartline? The magazine Heartline? Used to be a little flyer that the shelter put out?
Yeah.
Used to be like an informational, and I think Placer County, okay, forget that. So we agree, and I'm really excited that you're taking us on. Okay, so I'll preface it with that. We really do agree that the first issue is really microchipping and licensing. And so, you know, we hope to do lots of microchipping. We're offering free microchipping in Citrus Heights. Hopefully, you know, we can't force to license, but we can encourage licensing. Because that's where your capacity, if you can bring the, you know, we had the Calgary model that we studied when we had, looked at our animal services about 10, 15 years ago. We had a whole community, we call it committee, that looked at all the animal services. We invited the guy from Calgary here. He told us all about his stuff. And so it's like, license your dog, it's his ticket home. So if he gets out, you know, our officer will bring him home. The first ride's free. After that, it's here's your dog, here's your ticket. So, but they never have to go down to the shelter. They're delivered, and Calgary is big. It's a lot more square miles than Citrus Heights. So that was one, is that you, they never get there. And so my second question then becomes for relinquished animals that are adoptable. I know the problem, you know, because I'm a veterinarian, and over the years, when people wanted to adopt and they would go to the shelter, it's pit bull, pit bull, pit bull, pit bull. And all of the, you know, if somebody says, I'd really like to find a Dobby or I'd really like to find a, you know, they're not there. And because rescue groups were coming and sucking them up. Again, this is just the problem. I don't know that they're still there. But the rescue groups, the Dobby rescues or Great Pyrenees Rescue lady would come and they just suck all those breeds up. And then when you go to the front desk and say, I want a Dobby, oh, I'll refer you to Dobby Rescue. So then you go to Dobby Rescue. Now, they have a whole new set of criteria of who's eligible for adoption. If you have a cat in the house, oh, I'm sorry, you can't adopt this dog because those dogs don't like cats. So it's, these people set different criteria than you would have if that dog was in your location. So I'm just wondering what the adoption policies are when you get, you know, you get tempted to do that with rescue groups because you're overcrowded. And so all the dachshunds would go over here and all the chihuahuas go over here.
That's not the situation in this day and age. And to be quite honest with you, about 30% of the dogs that come to shelters, including our own at Bradshaw, are purebred dogs. But those are the dogs that are not just sitting. So if you casually decide you're going to go adopt a Fluffy today and you're just walking in, those dogs are going to be gone because we have a line at the door. It's first come, first served. And we promote what animals are becoming available on the website so people know. And we open at noon. There's already a line at 6:00 AM for people.
Don't you have fosters to take a lot of your dogs in until they're adoptable? And if people, and then they bring them out to mobile adoption events?
Sure, but our goal is to adopt them out. So as soon as they become available, and there's no problem with that because anything that's highly adoptable gets adopted the very first day that it becomes available. Rescues are eligible to take animals from us after they've been made available for adoption to the public a day later.
A day later.
We always make them available to the public first.
And are all the adoptable animals on your website?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, yes, oh, yes. And we're very interactive. In fact, on Tuesday night, I am very interactive and communicative. We invited all the rescue groups to a team meeting. I need to hear what's going on out there from all the rescues. And then I also meet with the lost and found administrators on social media throughout this county. And now I've got two other county lost and found administrators who have joined our group. And they're the boots on the ground and they tell me what's going on out there. So we do listen to what the community has to say. Thank you.
Just a question on the licensing. I think it was mentioned, but I just want to clarify. If I want to license my animal, can I do that in Citrus Heights or do I have to go to Bradshaw?
You absolutely can do that in Citrus Heights.
Excellent, and it can ship here too?
Yes.
Okay, and, okay, that's good.
Well, I'll just tell you that our process is going to change for Bradshaw because hopefully we'll get Citrus Heights on there. But I just completed an RFP for a dog license because we need to do something more effective and an easier and simpler model for people who want to be able to license their dogs from home. And so that process is up and coming. I'm waiting for the award to pass through its timeframe and then we'll formally announce it. But what we had done an RFP for was for people to be able to license their dog from home or they can call over the phone and make their payment and take care of everything at home. But they still have the option, obviously, if they want to come to the shelter.
Do you find that when we limit the number of animals that someone can own, that it deters licensing? It's like, when I campaigned, I knocked on a door that had five dogs in the window. So it's kind of.
I don't honor that.
You don't honor it?
No, I don't. I don't.
If the city has.
If you have six animals and you're able to care for them and spay and neuter for them, I'm not going to come confiscate your animals. I mean, I think, you know, as long as you're taking care of them.
Well, it's like children. You can have one child and be not a good parent. You can have 15 and be terrific, so.
Right.
Okay, anything else, ma'am?
Any other questions for me?
Any other questions or comments? Mayor Jane. And if not, I guess we'll return back to the item and any motions?
I move approval of Resolution 2024, Resolution of the City of Citrus Heights, California, authorizing city manager to execute a five-year agreement with the Bradshaw Animal Shelter in Sacramento County to be effective and commence on September 1, 2024, through June 30, 2029, with the option of renewing the agreement through July 1, 2031. I should live so long.
There you go.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved by Vice Mayor Karpinski-Costa and seconded by Councilmember Schaefer. Any questions or comments to the motion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Lopez Taff?
Yes.
Councilmember Middleton?
Yes.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Karpinski-Costa?
Absolutely, yes.
And Mayor Daniels?
Aye. Next item, please.
Next item is regular calendar, item number 11. The subject is Sunrise Boulevard's resurfacing project, award of construction contract. The recommendation is to adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with VSS International for the Sunrise Boulevard resurfacing project and finding the project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act under Section 15301.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. Regina Cave, General Services Director. I will do my best to keep this brief. This item would typically fall under the consent calendar. However, we felt that is kind of monumental, so we wanted to make sure that we talk through the project, let the council and the public know what to expect and be available for any questions that you may have. So this project was an expedited project. It was not part of the original pavement preservation plan that we had taken to council last December. We had some questions, concerns, not sure what our timing would be with some of our other high-priority projects, such as Auburn Boulevard Complete Streets, San Juan Phase 1, which is under construction, and the Dewey Van Marren resurfacing project. But things have changed a little bit since last December with some of our projects that got pushed out a little bit and have potentially provided a little opportunity for us to do some quick reinvestment of the Sunrise Boulevard corridor focusing in the area of the Sunrise Marketplace P-Bid. So in July, we put a project out. It took us about maybe four weeks to quickly design this project because the infrastructure that we have out there still has some really good bones and didn't need a full reconstruction. We've also done all of the ADA, necessary ADA improvements over the years. We were able to expedite a project as a resurfacing. This is not a repaving, which is why I want to explain the project. This is a resurfacing of the Sunrise Boulevard corridor. So the project will be Sunrise Boulevard from Greenback Lane to Madison Avenue. It will encompass the north crosswalk at Madison Avenue to the south crosswalk at Greenback Lane. So it will not encompass those two major intersections, but it will encompass the corridor. We also added Macy Plaza from Sunrise Boulevard to Birdcage. And the total is approximately 6,200 linear feet and 1.17 miles between both streets. So the existing conditions, as I said, there's still good bones out there. It looks like, you know, the pavement is poor just because you see cracks. But when you look at the foundation, you look, there's minimal base repairs necessary on this project. I think it's about 18,000 to 19,000 square feet, which isn't a lot when you're talking 450,000, 475,000 square feet of asphalt. So the planned improvements, we do have, again, some mill and fill to address the identified base failures. We will have some minor edge grinding, which is basically right along your gutter line just to make sure that we don't have any additional lift along that area. It will be a full road resurfacing with a three-layer treatment. So again, we are not grinding the entire roadway and repaving. We are doing a three-layer chip seal. We will be refreshing the crosswalks with colored brick patterns and then restriping, of course, all of the lanes, the crosswalks, and the pavement legends. So this is just a picture of a project that has been done elsewhere utilizing the same application. That first layer applies a type-three micro-surfacing with a high polymer content. This helps to fill in a lot of those cracks, get the road leveled off and provides that even surface for the next application. Then the second layer comes in and it's a polymer-modified asphalt rubber chip. So basically, rock chips that have been coated with polymer material. It's a strength layer, provides a 3/8-inch coarse level to the roadway. And then it will complete that seal, so it gets basically compressed into that first layer. And then that third layer will come in and microseal on top with a type-two micro-surfacing. That will finish off the surface. It goes down brown color. It does dry to a dark, to a black asphalt, improves the ride quality and then basically encapsulates your entire chip layer. So that polymer adds not only the flexibility of the material that you're driving on, but also a water sealant as well. The project schedule, because it is a major corridor, we do, and we look to do two-lane closures at a time. It will be night work primarily from 8:00 PM to 5:30 AM. We will allow some flexibility in terms of any elements of the project that can be done during the day with only closing one lane at a time. However, the three-layer application will be done at nighttime. We do need to be flexible because we are starting this relatively late in the season. While it feels warm now, the night temperatures do tend to drop sometimes a little bit cooler than what is optimum for this type of a project. So we will have to maintain flexibility. The number-one priority for me at this time, and not only with the project kicking off, would be the base repairs to get us at least through the storm season. So like I said, we will need to be flexible. If we can't meet the timeline of delivering the full project this year, we will be teed up to be able to resume as soon as weather provides for those opportunities in the spring. And then we will maintain communication with the Sunrise Marketplace P-Bid and any adjacent impacted residents. I did reach out to Ms. Kathleen Carpenter while the project was still in inception before we put it out to bid, let her know that this project was coming and that we would be working through her to make sure that we have all of the property owners and businesses informed. I do have my partner here, Mr. Scott Dimitrov with Pavement Aces here in the audience if you have any technical questions regarding this type of a project. Scott also lives here in Citrus Heights, so he has a vested interest in ensuring that this project does get delivered and has helped us actually through the pavement preservation plan that came to council last December and has helped provide consultant services for the Dewey Van Marren project as well.
All right, thank you so much. Any questions or comments? Vice Mayor Karpinski-Costa?
Where's the toll booth?
Madison Avenue, and we'll put up one up in Roseville coming into the city.
Welcome back from vacation. We missed you.
Oh, thank you.
So I'd like to make a motion.
Oh, I didn't fish my questions.
Oh, come on. There's more questions?
Well, I got questions too. I got lots of questions.
So here's my question, okay? And it's great you're going to do this. The crosswalks, okay, have you seen those crosswalks that kind of light up in the surface, on the street and at night? Or whatever, that you can see in the dark, that people aren't getting run over or whatever, or so?
Correct.
So have you seen those? They light up, they're right in the ground.
Mm-hmm. We have seen them. We do not have that budgeted for this type of a project. This project was to be able to do minimal electrical, minimal invasive work out there, get the road resurfacing.
If you do three layers, that's not cheap, so.
It's a lot cheaper than a typical repaving project. And because a repaving project would require all of the asphalt to be ground and affect the loops, the detection loops at all the traffic signals, the signalized intersections, it would be very costly to replace those and it's very difficult to find contractors. Or we would have to upgrade each of those intersections to a camera detection system, which is also costly and does take a long time. We were hoping to get this project expedited this year. But to your point, those are items that we can look in the future when we go back out to Sunrise to look at other things like the palm tree lights.
We see them at conferences and they're really cool.
Yeah.
And it does save pedestrian lives.
And we're hoping that the crosswalks, when we come out there with this process to repaint them, it'll be a heated material that they will apply to those crosswalks to make them bright red again. That will improve the visibility as well as with the restriping of those crosswalks.
Okay.
I'm sorry I had to step out. You might have said this. You have the projected dates for start and finish?
As soon as contract is awarded this evening. We are actually already starting with a contractor to get a pre-con meeting scheduled by next week. He's already reached out to me regarding the mill and fill, so we're looking to get this expedited basically into September.
And if the issue of weather comes into play because of the cooler nights that are coming up, which is wonderful, is it possible to switch from night work to maybe some weekend day work? If, just to get it done, I'd hate to see it started and not get finished.
Yeah, we could. We could entertain that. It's just a dialogue and conversation we have between the city manager and also the businesses out there, obviously. Any impacts to the traffic along Sunrise Boulevard during the day, prime hours of the business operations of the P-Bid? Could be a little bit difficult, but we're more than welcome to entertain that.
You said Scott lives here in Citrus Heights, so we'll need his address and stuff to make sure.
Yes, and he will be there with our night paving operations to ensure that the product is applied correctly and ensures an optimum final product.
Great, excellent. Any questions or comments? Mr. Schaefer, would you like to make a motion?
I'd love to make a motion. I move that Resolution 2024, Resolution of City Council of City of Citrus Heights, California, authorizing city manager to execute an agreement with VSS International for the Sunrise Boulevard resurfacing project and finding the project an exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act under Section 15301.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Schaefer and seconded by Councilmember Lopez Taff. Any questions or comments for the motion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Lopez Taff?
Yes.
Councilmember Middleton?
Yes.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Karpinski-Costa?
Yes.
Yes.
And Mayor Daniels?
Aye. Next item, please.
Next item is department reports, and we have a brief department report from the Administrative Services Department.
I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna come up here real quick, because I'm not going to take too much of your time. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. Susan Towor here, Administrative Services Director. And hot off the press, on behalf of ASD Finance Division, I wanted to bring to your attention, we have our Budget in Brief, which is the mini version of the budget book. We even have the QR code here, if you wanted to take a deeper dive into our budget book. But just wanted to make that quick announcement.
Thank you so much.
Very nice.
Did you put some of these in the back for our wonderful...
There are some back there, yes.
Okay, great. I advise people that want, look for our Budget Brief on your way out the door. Susan did a great job on it.
Thank you.
Susan, I want to thank you for publishing this, because I've been carrying around our budget in my bag, and this is so much easier to do, to carry around. Thank you.
Certainly was a team effort, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, next item, please.
Next item is city manager items.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Ash Finney, your city manager. Just a few brief updates, but first I want to acknowledge from the great work that's happening, we just heard about the Budget in Brief, really well-done document. It keeps getting better and better as the way that we're disseminating information about our fiscal position and our budget to the community. So thank you for everyone that was involved in that, our administrative services director and her team, as well as comms and others that participated. And then also, just Director Cave, this last item, I mean, resurfacing Sunrise Boulevard before incorporation, before that was really touched. So that's going to be something, it's going to be really impactful for the community and also our ability to attract businesses here. So really appreciate all her good work and the work of her team that's been involved with that. But I know that that's something that she personally put a lot of time into, and a lot of gratitude towards her for that. Let's see, we've got a couple of slides here. And I think on the first one, there was something that was spoken to earlier. The City of Citrus Heights establishes a pro-housing community. There was a resolution that City Council adopted around that. And when you are a pro-housing community, sometimes you get rewarded for that, and this is one of those cases. So the HCD, Housing and Community Development Department from the state, granted $960,000 to the city. It was a competitive program. Director Campanar, as well as our Housing Human Services Coordinator, Nicole Piva, and our senior planner, Ally Bermudas, worked hard to put in for this money, put in for it last year. And we were just on the cusp, and this year put in for it, learning from last year, and we were able to, to get this award. So kudos to them for that. And this is something that we're going to propose to put forward towards a replacement housing for our obligation to replace the Sayonara Drive housing.
When are they going to start the project?
We'll have an update on that later.
No date yet.
So. Another terrific item, the American Public Works Association recognized Arcade Cripple Creek Trail as Project of the Year. So it's a fantastic award. That ceremony was on Friday of last week. You can see there's a brochure, as well as a plaque, that recognizes Citrus Heights as Project of the Year for Arcade Cripple Creek Trail. Our city engineer, Leslie Blumquist, had a fantastic speech. She was the best speaker of the day there of all the awardees, and really represented the city well. And you can see members of our team that were involved with that project are, were present at that, at that meeting, and they even let me come. And so that was fantastic. There's also so many that weren't in that picture, that do the hard work every day to help make that thing, that thing, projects like that possible. So a lot of gratitude on that. It's something to be very proud of and just appreciate our city engineer, Leslie Blumquist's work on that, as well as so many others. There is a speaking engagement that I'll be at next week, so if anyone would like to come to the Citrus Heights Chamber Luncheon, there's tickets available. It's August 20th of next week, and so I'll be speaking on some matters that are important to the city. And then we also have some other items here, some save-the-date items. On August 22nd, we have the Citrus Heights Chamber Elected Officials Reception that they do every year. That'll be here at City Hall from 5:00 to 7:00. The Veterans Community Center of Citrus Heights over on Sylvan Road is having their[1633.08]